We'll go ahead and get started. Start this meeting on the Board of Education at 7:09. If you could all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the highest form.
This is great to see you, crowd. Thank you. Dr. Willet, acknowledgements.
So I'm sorry that before the meeting, I didn't get a chance to kind of run out there and shake your hands before we started. It's a little hectic, but we're starting today with a recognition of our valedictorian and salatorian. And so I'm going to read a little statement about each of them, and I'm going to give them a special prize from the prize bag. Luckily for you, then, you know, the board can take an opportunity to engage them and also share our respect for them and admiration. So first is Maren Millington. She is our salatorian. She'll come down. It's evident that Maren has a passion for knowledge. She consistently demonstrates intellectual curiosity that surpasses many others. She is fully capable and fully engaged in the curriculum. She approaches all subjects with enthusiasm and diligence. She has completed among the most rigorous curriculum and courses that our school offers. Last year, she was awarded the Award of Excellence in every core subject, including Spanish. Beyond academics, she exemplifies leadership and service. Her extracurricular involvement is diverse and offers her the opportunity to foster school spirit and community engagement in her various roles in student council and class offices. Additionally, her involvement in the link crew demonstrates a genuine commitment to mentoring peers and creating an inclusive school environment. Her membership in three honor societies displays and is exemplifying her commitment to achievement and service. She has, and she's also an accomplished athlete, excelling in both lacrosse and as captain of soccer team. She approaches challenges with maturity and perseverance. Her ability to balance multiple commitments while maintaining a high standard of excellence in everything she does is truly commendable. She has made our community proud and represents what it truly means to be an Eagle. Come on up. Okay. Cameron Urban is our valedictorian. Cameron has successfully excelled in our school's most rigorous courses as well and demonstrated exceptional intelligence and commitment in all endeavors. Throughout his time at Talon High School, he has thrived in various AP courses and with dual enrollment and honors level courses. He has a unique combination of talent, playing in the jazz band and pep band and mastering the most advanced math, science, and English courses offered. His academic achievement has been recognized by the Science Department, who selected him with a Rensselaer Medal and the faculty who chose him for numerous pride awards. He continues to strive for excellence in his studies this year, and by graduation, he will have completed seven AP courses and three University of Connecticut courses. I'm sure his parents are very happy about that. In addition to the curriculum, Cameron is a leader in the community. As a link leader, he mentors ninth grade students and assists with their transition to high school. He also volunteers with younger athletes, sharing his skills and encouraging them to join high school sports teams. Cameron is a fierce competitor on the varsity tennis team, varsity outdoor track and field team, and the rage robotics team. He has made the Talon community proud, and as with Maren, Cameron represents what it truly means to be an Eagle. Congratulations.
Just one quick statement, both of you. It is my absolute honor to meet you both. You know, on top of what had to be a Herculean effort from an academic perspective, you've both taken the time to give to the people coming a bit behind you. And really, that's what touches me the most. If you sit and think about how many people are better because of the efforts that you did without thinking about it, without asking for anything in return, that's an inspiration. But thank you both for representing Talon, for representing our district, and for just being the amazing people that you are. To the parents, this could not have been easy. The sacrifice and the time that you gave to make sure these two young adults could be the spectacular people they are is not unnoticed. Thank you both.
You guys have any words of wisdom for your fellow students? I'm so sorry. Are you for graduation, man?
Yeah.
Smart move, smart move. Good save, yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
I'll get between them. That way we don't kind of puff like them. I'll send them through.
Thank you.
We will see you. Congratulations. Anything before that, let me know.
All right, Dr. Willet.
Additionally, this evening, we have the honor of honoring some of our athletics, our sports athletes or student athletes and their achievements. To do so, I have Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you again for having us here. It's always a pleasure to come and be able to, you know, show off what a great group of student athletes we have. Just to add to the accolades of both Cam and Maren, they also are a CIC scholar athletes. So you'll be seeing them on the Facebook page once we go to our banner down in May. So again, another great accomplishment for the two of them. So the other thing that we're here for tonight is this past winter, during the winter season, we had some outstanding accomplishments by multiple teams, but one of our teams in particular and an individual athlete. And so our gymnastics team and Dylan Stolper from track really excelled. I'm going to introduce their coaches, give them an opportunity just to give you a highlight of what happened this year. If we went into all of the accolades that this gymnastics team has earned over the past, you know, three to four years that they've been in existence, this would probably be your longest meeting. They've been state champs, open, New England, but coach should talk about this year. And this was really nice for me. Prior to coming to Talon, I got to work with Callie at Ellington. So she had really helped to build this program to what it is, and then Richie came on board, and the two of them have done just an amazing job pulling these two schools together and getting them to work as one under some, you know, some difficult circumstances with, you know, cracks in offsite, multiple schools, multiple families. So to give a little bit more about our season, I could juice our head coach, Callie Valentine.
The owl will find you.
A little small, so I probably can go in front. Well, I just wanted to start off by congratulating our team. This is our third year, I think, colluding together. So it's been a great opportunity to have both schools together to give, especially Talon, the opportunity to be a part of the team sports. Because before, they were just individuals. So it's been awesome to see how the two teams have collaborated together to have done an amazing job. Well, this year, our season, we did fairly well. We ended the season 10th in the state, which made us go to team states. And at the end of our team competition, we ended up sixth in the state, which is pretty decent. And in, Tim did mention our previous years, we were even higher up in the state. So it's just been three years of really, really good, hardworking gymnasts. After our team states, we, at our team states, we got second in our Class M championship division. So that is pretty amazing. This is our third, third or fourth year in a row topping in Class M championships. So that's pretty, pretty impressive. Last year, or the last two years, we actually won Class M championships. So pretty, pretty incredible. And then on top of making it to team states, I had two Talon gymnasts also make it to state opens individually. We had Cassidy, who's a wave. She made it individually for floor, and then Ava made it individually for bars. And they both performed amazingly, and we are very proud of their accomplishments. And then we have two managers who have been incredible for the past couple of years, helping support our team and being there at practices and competitions and just helping us in any way we can. So been pretty great.
What's the, what's the hardest, you know? If you want to stand out of the chair. The one you're doing the flippy thing?
I would say probably for most gymnasts, bars itself is probably just the hardest event to do. It takes the most strength and courage, honestly, to do. It's very, very scary. On top of all of those, we, our team did make All-State. So Cassidy and Ava, making it to state opens, became All-State gymnasts and got to go to the All-State banquet a couple of weeks ago to get honored for that. And our Ellington-Talon team together also got All-American status this year.
The effort to keep you hydrated.
While you're doing that, Dr. Willet, I got a question. So did I hear you right that you guys have won state championships the last two years? For Class M? Twenty-three and twenty-four.
Got second place this year.
All right, so you gotta stop slacking and get back up. Two out of three, that was pretty impressive. That's good. Congratulations.
Absolutely amazing effort. Thank you. It's, I mean, it was hard enough for me to get through just school, let alone athletics, and to do both at such a, such a top level. It is truly wonderful, and hats off to all of you for representing and doing it all.
Congratulations.
Just as a correction, I think, Mr. McCluskey, I think I called you Mr. McCarthy. And so the next athlete that we have to recognize here, again, Dylan is, I look at any of our athletes, I'm just so odd with what they do. Watching the gymnast who Dr. Willet asked like what the hardest thing is, I think part of the reason they may not have had an answer is because they're so good at what they do, and they've worked so hard that it is second nature. Like the thought of me just standing on a balance beam and taking a step just seems crazy, but for them, it's just, you know, he's cake. So, and Dylan is, you're going to hear from Coach Elliott, again, Dylan is another one of those athletes that I watched him the other day in the rain, out there running. I watched him in the winter when it was 23 degrees, out there running. Just nothing stops him. And again, just a tremendous example for, you know, for everyone at Talon High School and Talon just in general. So to talk a little bit more about Dylan, our head track coach, Brandon Elliott.
So thank you very much. It's great to have the opportunity to acknowledge these great athletes here, along with Maren and Cam, who I had as, you know, students back in the day as well, taking some of the, you know, most challenging courses that we have to offer here. For Dylan, again, I can speak to a lot of his accomplishments from this season, which were phenomenal, but it was really a four-year process to get him where he was at this point in his high school career. He's been part of multiple state champion and runner-up teams over his four years as a member of our cross-country and track and field programs. This particular year, he was selected as a captain of our boys' cross-country indoor and outdoor. So not only is he a great athlete, he's also a great leader for our athletes and has been even before he was elected to that position. For indoor track and fields, we spend a lot of our time traveling throughout the state because, as you know, Talon High School does not have an indoor track, nor do many high schools around the state. So we spend a lot of time at various colleges and universities for athletes to have an opportunity to qualify, to compete at their state championship meets. This year, Dylan ran the thousand, where he was the boys' Class M thousand meter state champion. He set a new school record in that event. He also, with that performance, earned a opportunity to run at the state open, as well as at New England's, where he was named All-New England by finishing in the top six in New England in that thousand meter event. He also moved on to nationals, indoor nationals, was held up in Boston just a few weeks ago. He ran the 800 meter, which is the distance contested at nationals, where he set a new school record in that particular event as well. And he also anchored a relay team of boys that we had there in sprint medley relay, where they ran the season best time. So it was a phenomenal season, start to finish. Did a great job. And again, as Mr. McCluskey had said, he's put in a tremendous amount of work, going above and beyond in order to achieve that level of success.
That was it for tonight.
Well, I'm sure athletes who want to come up and Mr. McCluskey, you can start your thoughts. All right, I usually give a count on three. One, two, three. Next, one more time. One, two. You guys have any inspirational words for your fellow students? What do you think about your culture? Is any dirt in the guns? We love that. Right. Well, thank you very much, guys. Now, you know, the purpose was to honor you and not torture you. So at any time in the next minute, if you're still looking out, you know, that's totally up to you. If you'd like to stay for the entire budget presentation, absolutely. We'd love to hear your input. But we're going to look this way, and if we disappear behind, you know, this happens.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I put it on my calendar, actually.
We can go ahead and do the next one again. Do we have, do we have any additions to the agenda? Hearing none. We have no, no minutes to approve, so we'll move past that. And now we will parlay what we made. I thought that would take a little bit of time. How are you two doing?
We're good. Yeah, a lot of homework. So on, it's one of my favorite days. I have to leave early, but I'll leave you with some wisdom before I go. Don't worry.
Tony, would you like to move that H in front of, just in case, saying that budget question response runs 30 minutes if they have?
Well. Moving in front of.
Yeah, moving in front of now.
Tony, do you want to move that?
We got a motion to move the student representation representative's report up to now.
Any discussion? All right, Jayden.
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Hi, Jen?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
And I haven't seen this Katie on. Okay, perfect. And Dr. Willet, in the interest of homework, we are going to move the student representative's report to now.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you very much. It means a lot to both me and my teachers. So we're going to start off strong, and this was from basically feels like last month already. But DECA States happened very early this month. We took 41 competitors, and we left with eight, six top three placements, as well as other fourth and place medalists. You will hear and learn more about them in the future as they're coming to a future Word of Ed meeting, where you can, you know, learn from their stories, you can see them, shake their hands, get to know them. But it's a really great group. We have 10 people go into nationals in Orlando, Florida, the 25th of April through the 30th of April. So that will be including, that will be such a fun time. I'll come back with a massive report from that. But DECA States went wonderfully, and everyone had a great time. Moving on, what another business thing? The Talon Talks Speaker Series happened last week. Hunter Mulhouser came and presented in front of 60 students on how to start a business, modeled after he himself started his own business after graduating Talon High School. It was a very interactive presentation. It was a lot of fun. I helped organize it as seminar student for Mrs. Bridges here, and I gained a lot from it. I know a lot of students gained a lot from it, and I hope that Hunter gains a lot from it too. But these Talon Talks Speaker Series are a large part of our Business Pathways Program, and they allow a lot of, Jen, they allow, they allow a lot of people to learn a lot of new things. You know, business is ever-growing, and we like to represent that in the Business Pathways Program. What another business thing? It's like this keeps happening. Innovation Challenge, I mentioned it before. The state level is happening April 22nd, just a little bit before nationals. And we have two teams that are invited to go. The first-place team, which is comprised of Willsey's honor, Cecilia Reese Jairo, Ashby Shaw, and Andre McCowen, who will unfortunately not be present at the state competition due to work obligations. And another team that won third place, comprised of Danny Terrasuk, Amanda Itsu, Dayana Rodriguez, Brooklyn Walls, and Michael Wiggins. So those two teams will be making it up to Quinnipiac University on April 22nd to compete for the state innovation challenge. And my last thing, wait, I'm sorry. Is this another business thing? Yes, it is. We have a lot this month. Interview Day is happening next week. Interview Day is a big part of the personal finance class in our school. It is where a bunch of different professionals from around the town and county come in and form real-life interviews with students to help students practice making portfolios, public speaking, real-life interview skills that they'll use in the future. I'm also part of this personal finance class. And to some of those on this, on the Zoom, I am interviewing with Brian Foley. So put in a word. You know, sprinkle a little sugar. But yeah, that is a super impactful day. I think you can get a lot from it. And it is very, very highly regarded.
All right. So a couple of weeks ago, our theater program had their showing of Hades Town. I don't know if any of you went, but I went. It was one of the most amazing Talon High School productions I had ever seen. Honestly changed what my expectations were for a high school production of a play. It was really amazing. I was almost brought to tears. It was just really, really amazing. Chamber choir and jazz band auditions are April 10th. If you have any questions, ask Mr. Fields. And also, the class of 2025 held their dodgeball tournament. We had seven teams come out and play. So it was an overall success, which was really delightful since we've had a lot of problems with, what's the word? Participation lately, but that worked out really well. We had a lot of people come and watch, and yeah.
All right. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Jane?
Hunter Mulhouser.
Hunter Mulhouser.
Former DECA student.
He was. He was the first Talon student to place at nationals.
Bingo. There you go.
Yeah, and my neighbor. He's a great guy.
Other question?
I have a comment. I don't really think you need to sprinkle any sugar in your interview day. I think you're going to do just fine. You might teach him a thing or two.
Yeah.
Maybe you should interview him.
Now, and I don't want to put you on the spot, so feel free to bow out. But knowing that you have to go, do you have any comments on items later in the agenda?
I'm so glad you asked. No, I don't. Actually, I do. You know, similar to last season, this is a really tough budget season. I've looked over some of the stuff. It's nasty, and I don't like looking at it. Had to shut my computer a few times. But I want you all to keep in mind, just like last year, how impactful this is not only on the students, not only on the teachers, but on the community. This is a big thing for our community every year, and I hope that more people and more people come out and vote, especially more than last year. You know, I don't get to vote until June. My birthday is June 1st. I don't want to have to vote in this election. If I must, you guys know probably what my vote will be. But I really want to put forward, not only to the board, but to anyone watching, that this is absolutely critical. And this season of budget cuts is not like any other season of And this season of budget cuts is not like any other season of budget cuts. Because I talked about it last year, if we keep going down, that momentum will grow stronger and stronger until Tolland is no longer a school district. One that people move to schools for. It's just another district. It is so critical that we have a strong school system that supports its students and its teachers. And I really, really hope that even if I'm not here to look at you like this, that you'll keep that in mind throughout this process because it's truly important to me, it's important to Sarah, it's important to all of the students at Tolland High School, that we get the quality of education that we deserve, even with the budget cuts that we don't deserve. So thank you.
I think I really just want to repeat that we need people to come out and vote. I'm gonna be voting. I'm eighteen, so.
Yeah.
You'll see me out there. Um, but yeah, that's really critical. I feel like last year we had a big problem. Again, with participation, seems like a trend all around. Um, but go out and vote. It's really important, especially to us students who, even some of us who can't, we try to show up. We're here right now representing the students because we want to be here. We want to say our piece. We want to let the students have a voice in what goes into our school because that's ultimately what affects. And I guess I just want to say to keep us in mind, um, even though we all have different opinions on what or how the school should be run, um, it's really just about thinking that we all have our best interests in mind, and we all just have to come together and figure out how that's gonna work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, both.
Thank you very much. Wish me luck on my million pages.
That was great. All right, Dr. Willett, moving on, uh, to, and again, I thank the Communication Committee for, for the recommendation here. Uh, but instead of our normal public participation here at the beginning, we are going to test run our community budget question and response period. So the members of the Tolland Board of Education, welcome the members of the public to ask a budget question at this time. Please raise your hand physically or virtually, and when selected by myself, state your name and address and ask a question up to three minutes in duration. The superintendent will then answer your question, or if the question requires additional information and in consideration of the time, uh, it will be posted to be a B O E fact document on the website, which is linked right there. Okay, so that being said, like I said, if you are in the room, um, raise your hand. If you're online, raise your virtual hand and be recognized. Sir?
Hi, John Gray, uh, two sixty Grand Hill Road. Um, I emailed the, uh, board and the, and town council the other day, my thoughts on the budget processes this year. My question is, um, seeing as the town manager is, is trying to strike a chord with the voters and get the budget down to three percent level, and we've had a systemic problem with voter participation at eighteen percent vote in all three referendum. Is there anything that the school board can do or the town can do to better communicate to the town residents um, the importance of, of voting in this, uh, in this process? It seems as though we have eighty-five to ninety percent show up for a presidential election in town, but we have eighteen and twenty-one percent. Is there anything available to us in terms of, um, flyers, emailing, social media that the town can do to kind of encourage people to to get out and vote and, and reinforce the importance of the process?
I, I think it's a great question, one that we, uh, we grapple with every year. Uh, once the referendum is set, uh, we can't advocate for a budget. Um, prior to that point, we're also somewhat limited. We can share information. So the methods that have been used for that have been more or less the, the bulletins, the digital backpacks, um, and, um, you know, various, uh, communications that are sent mostly through our, our, our I-five system with respect to those bulletins. Online, there is a budget site for all, uh, of the public, and it's at www.tolland.k twelve dot C T dot U S. There's a budget section, and if, uh, people click on that and click the budget, there are a series of documents, and there's a calendar that explains when all of the, uh, different things are happening in town and the different meetings that, uh, will be covering budget-related items. Um, a lot of that, uh, is really, uh, you know, out there, but getting people to it is the challenge. And, um, so, you know, we tried through a variety of ways, through video and like certain things to do that, but I think we need to to continue to brainstorm about how to best do it because people have very complicated lives and they're very busy. So having, um, you know, getting a lot of people to come out is challenging. Or getting a lot of people even to, to see it is challenging, and we are trying to figure that out ourselves. Not, no.
Brian, this Communication Chair, did you want to add anything?
No, I, I, the only thing I did want to add, I know at the end of last year, there was, uh, I believe it was a town council or somebody had met, there was some conversations happening about the following year because the process did take so many cycles of, uh, voting, of actually like putting out banners and signs when the Ellington Line into Mansfield or Coventry Line and, you know, around town to whether they're gonna go ahead with that plan, or if it was just chatter at the end of last budget cycle, I do not know, but I know there was discussion about it, but whether or not that's actually, the town is actually doing that, I do not know.
Thank you. Uh, Kate Howard Bender.
Hi, y'all. Kate Howard Bender, one of three Goose Lane. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Sorry. I thought I heard a feedback. I was, anyhow, okay, question. Question number one. Um, how can we make sure, given the continuous um, cuts, uh, reductions, whatever we want to call it, um, in the opportunities for our kids, that they are going to be adequately served when they get beyond Tolland High School? That's question one. Um, and then question two, same old question as always. Can we please ask the town council to use some money out of the general fund, fund balance? Sorry. Um, I'm doing that because it's been said before, but, um, if not now, when? So that's my second question, and that's kind of more of a V O E question than it is a Dr. Willett question, but just getting it on the record. Thank you, friends, for the work that you do and for advocating for our students, as always. Be well.
Thank you, Kate. Dr. Willett?
So the, um, with respect to how to make sure the students are served despite the cuts, um, you know, I think that is the, the thing that typically is the biggest challenge whenever we, you know, go through a budget process and, you know, the various things that are happening this year in the budget, both on a federal and state and local level, you know, that's always on my mind. What I would suggest is that, you know, the cuts, any cuts that would happen to a school district, the job of any, you know, educators, administrators, you know, all of us, is to do our best to make that have the lowest impact, least impact on kids that we can. There's no great way to answer that question because, um, any loss, you know, will have a, um, you know, will have an impact, but, you know, we'll do our best to make sure that, you know, whatever impacts we do have to face, that, uh, you know, we appropriately modify services so that kids are getting the best shot possible coming out of the town public schools. Then you have a very good school system with very high, um, scores for performance, for accountability scores, and really hardworking people. So we, you know, it does have an impact, but we're always going to be doing everything we can to mitigate it because we're in the job to serve children. Um, so we're never gonna give up, but we do want to start to figure out ways, and the district is doing it, uh, to cost-avoid and to come up with, uh, ways to offset budgets. So we have programs like LEAP, we have programs like TTA. Um, you know, we have Open Choice, um, Cooperative Program, and all of these programs provide, um, opportunities either for cost avoidance or for some revenue into the district. Um, we have independent food services. We have an FCS program that run independently, and we can leverage those things, too. So we are constantly looking for new ways to provide offsets to the budgets. And, you know, we'll continue to do that to try to minimize impacts from budget seasons and to provide other options for Tolland, uh, you know, other funding sources to help.
Thank you. And I just, you know, that, that question is also the upgrade that could give, you know, a shout out to the absolute amazing people that are our teachers and our staff. You know, we've had, as you're going to see, and as we've seen, we've had reductions before. But each year, our teachers, our staff, our admins are sitting there for the rest of the year, trying to figure out ways of squeezing just a little bit more out of that. They're, they're making combinations, they're teaching the curriculum in just a slightly different way than they did before to try to make up and compensate, uh, for what just isn't there. And that's an absolutely amazing and commendable thing. But eventually it's get to the point where there's just nothing that can come back out of that. We have to realize that floor exists despite the quality of the educators that we that we have.
Okay. Just like, uh, but, uh, I'd like to add, um, uh, correct on my numbers, but I do believe that the town, uh, when they put forward their budget, I believe there was four or five thousand for one fund, and I think two or three thousand, I think with a total of seven or eight hundred thousand dollars they were using, but I don't necessarily know what the per, uh, what they were using it on specifically. Um, I don't, I don't know if it was just, I really don't know what is specific, but I do know the town was using some money, not obviously not on the board of that side that we are aware of.
Other questions in the room, online? Raise your hand or your virtual hand. Going once. Thank you all, again, Dr. Willett, and, uh, Brian, your committee. I think it's a good idea. I like this recommendation. All right, moving on correspondence, Mr. Bowley.
We had two emails come in, you know, since last week, both budget-related, one, one, uh, budget, one, uh, security-related. That was it.
All right. What's the information? Would anybody from the board like to speak? Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to talk about the two rounds we did, um, visiting the schools. We had one last week, one maybe a month ago, but I don't think anybody talked about it at the last meeting, so I figured I would do both. Um, so our most recent rounds was at Tolland Middle School. Um, Tony, Dana, and myself attended. These rounds focused on, uh, unified arts programming, and that is art, computer science, health, library, music, physical education, technology, and world language. We were able to visit classrooms, um, meet with teachers, um, meet with, and meet with a group of eight students across the three grades, six to eight. The classrooms were great. They were lively with teacher-student interaction, um, as well as student-student interaction. We saw students working in both Spanish and French. Um, we started receiving a lesson with active participation, and we saw one with kids moving around the room in groups. We viewed kids working in Mr. Schneider's technology class, testing their own crafted bridges to see how much weight they could support. Um, students were learning without even trying. They were engineers. They were cheering each other on, and they were worried about what would happen on their turn. They were commenting on changes that they were already seeing. They can make to their own bridge. Um, they were excited and they were happy. Um, teachers were very informative regarding their curriculum and why and how the concepts of each course contribute to the student as a whole student and a whole citizen. Um, I encouraged the board. I think Dr. Willett posted, um, a video. It was actually made by one of the students that we met with. Um, and the materials were also posted. I would love to give an update on every single one of the classes, um, and the curriculum and the concepts and how they tied into, how they taught the children new things, but how they tied into all of their other courses and really just about them becoming, um, human citizens, you know, or grown citizens of the world. Um, but I'm afraid I'll, I'll miss somebody or something, so I don't want to get too specific, but, um, I have to say that the best part of the day was meeting with the students. We had eight students, and they were blowing away kind of students. They were eloquent. They were so prepared, but they spoke off the cuff. They were passionate about what each class means to them. Um, these classes and these teachers mean the world to them. They, uh, what struck me was, um, their requests for us more. They wanted more choice. They don't have choice. They wanted more flexibility. They wanted more time. They wanted more language options. They wanted more HTML. They wanted more quoting. They talked to us about programs and what they were like and what happened when they finished them and what they did. They wanted more time in jam bands. They wanted more time. One of the students there was a part of, of, of the band. He was working on the play. He created the video that was posted about Unified Arts. He did it in SOAR. He's in the technology or, uh, media club that I think he maybe meets once a month. They asked for more time to do these things. Um, they talked about how they couldn't believe how much they learned, that they, you know, would never have thought they'd be interested in what happened. They can't believe what they took out of it and how it changed the perception on things, or they didn't think they were an artist, and then they had this great lesson, and they became so interested, and they're excited to take art classes in high school when they were options. Um, they weren't asking for help on the rides. They were asking for quoting, you know? They, it was, it, it was, it was amazing, and it was informative. Um, they, I actually have some of their quotes, so I don't know. I'll just randomly pick one. I did not think of myself as artistic, and then we started looking at a certain art, which moves as you move. I began researching it, and I found my passion in art. Um, in P E, I was grouped with people I normally wouldn't work with. We have to collaborate. We had to work as a team to win the game. It's also movement in the middle of the day, and it helps me focus for the rest of the day. A lot of the kids talked about how they are so overwhelmed during the course of the day, and these classes were a break for them. They knew that they were learning, but they were using the creative side of their mind, and they were asking when they had these things in the beginning of the day, can't we find a way to sometimes have them in the middle of the day? Um, they, they treasure them. Um, we need to have U A options and could choose. We used to have more offerings. You know, some said, my brother had this, my sister had this, in sixth grade we had this, and you reduce them. Um, some kids loved a second P E choice. I personally loved the class HTML, where we get to get into coding. Computer science is good, but we should start computer science before middle school and expand our offerings at middle school. Um, they talked about how much they loved. A lot of them are library helpers, and they work in the library with the librarian, and they do all kinds of projects as well. Um, and there used to be a seminar class, and they, where they could research a topic and they could present to their um, peers. It was just, it was, it was really amazing, and, um, I just want to thank, we, we got to meet with all of the Unified Arts teachers and the administration, and of course, Dr. Willett, and the time that goes into preparing this, I can't even imagine. So thank you, Dr. Willett, and thank you to everyone who was involved. The second one I want to touch on is the Birch Grove rounds. Um, that was maybe about a month ago. That was Tony, Bill, Brian, and myself. That's where we looked at math and E L A M T S S. M T S S is multi-tiered support system. And I know that that's confusing. A lot of people ask me about that, and we have a lot of people online, so briefly, you know, multi-tier support systems, tier one is, you know, classroom instruction. Tier two breaks down, you know, kids maybe get extra help in things. They work, you know, with devices. Tier three is when you move to very small groups, two to five students, intensive, individualized. Um, these are most needy students. After you leave that is when you go into special education. So, um, for tier two, we were able to see, we began the day, we got to see students in, uh, before-school computer lab, and they were working mainly on iPads, and they were working at one with a reading program. Um, don't forget, these are, these are K through two. These are little guys, and they were, you know, sitting on the ground with their iPads, some in groups, some on their own. And they were so excited to show me what they were, uh, working on, what level they were on, how many points they needed. They talked about, some of them said, I do this at home with my parents. Someone said, I can't do this at home because we don't have a computer. Um, they were fantastic and adorable. Um, and then we went into the math lab, which was so cool. Kids kind of kept funneling in and out. They came in with their iPad. They picked up, um, a laminated sheet that had a Q R code on it. They went and they sat down, they scanned themselves in, so they were, they were independent and autonomous. But, um, they were all working on math, and they were using virtual manipulatives, the same that they use in the classroom. So, you know, dice and Rickacks and number lines, and they were, again, everyone I sat with could, you know, told me all about what they were doing, how many points they needed to complete. The great math interventionists were walking around. The great math interventionists were walking around and helping children as they needed it or checking their progress. That was really cool. Then we looked at tier three students, so we were able to observe small groups that were working with both our ELA and math interventionists. And we actually got to see a new group starting. There, I think it's like a six-week intervention group. They had just begun, so we really saw them as they were. The inter, the interventionists were welcoming, welcoming them in, earning their trust, you know, dealing with some, some SEOs and social emotional learning concepts to make sure that they felt safe in the classroom. Again, these are our most needy kids before special ed, so a lot of kids, you know, have trouble when they're all of a sudden in a new group, right? So that building of trust is important. We also got to see, you know, another group as they were farther in the lesson with the math interventionist, and then we get to see our ELA interventionist with kids working on reading concepts. Um, it was just, it was wonderful. It was enlightening. We met with the interventionists. We met with the, and with the administration. We had all of the curriculum heads with us and Dr. Willet as well. They discussed with us the curriculum, the concepts throughout the day, each time we got a break, strategies, data collection, how children are identified, how they're observed, how they're make progress, how they're recorded, how that follows them up into the older years. So it was, again, just a wonderful day to see our schools in action and to see our kids getting excellent educations and care and all of those good things. So thank you very much, Dr. Willet, for putting those together, and thanks to all of our staff.
And the the heavy lift on that is our staff. The teachers, the students, the paras, the secretaries, the, you know, everybody involved with those instructional rounds, you know, and the administration. I just want to thank them all. They do the heavy lift. Dan.
Well, a couple of things. First, I wish I'd tend to thank all of our student athletes that were here tonight, because that was really awesome to see such success on multiple levels and see it in real life here in the room. But also, I was able to go to the middle school. I just want to reiterate, I don't want to, Jen Jen articulated quite well with what we saw, but those students were mind-blowing, and Ms. Hickey, she she said, she said, I'm going to say I never, I gave, she gave the kids two days' notice that they were going to be on on the group that was going to spin. And they, so with that, you had some with the little note cards with the five different color highlighters and very organized, and then you had others speaking just right from the hip and exactly what they were feeling, exactly what they were needing, exactly what they were wanting, exactly what they were getting, and how it was impacting them. Jen did say that they did ask, they did ask for things, because there have been things that are different since they were in sixth grade now, eighth grade even. Um, the big thing that I heard from from what they were saying was these unified arts classes gave them a lot of confidence, opportunities, leadership opportunities, opportunities to learn something that they didn't know that they had. You know, like there was, like the one kid who wasn't an artist, he found art in a different way. Was it photography? Was it video? It wasn't the, like drawn clay. He, he said, I'm not an artist, but then few seconds later, he said he was an artist in a different capacity. So I think opening up the doors for these students gives them an opportunity to thrive and excel. And then that case, also, they said it was also a break, although they were learning in these classes. It gives them a break to rejuvenate, to get back to their core classes. But then again, it was also putting another tool in their toolbox to help them succeed in their classes. But I wish that we could always have these beings, these student athletes here, and I wish that we could have our students. All of us could have been there and listening to those those students, because that's why we're here, right? It was just so amazing to see what our future has with these with these students, and they really put a lot into perspective of what they need and what they're thriving in. Like Jen said, they're not asking for these crazy weird classes. They were asking for more internet security, coding, you know, tech, all that stuff. And it's, it's, it was pretty cool, you know, what they had to say. So again, if you ever have a chance, I know there's only one more for the calendar or for the school calendar year, but please take a chance and take time to come and go to them, and and please go on and see the video of one of our students, and she said he whipped it together in SOAR class, and it's just, but it would have taken me days and days and days to do a video that was so brilliant. And the bridge, I, we did tell, I did tell Ms. Hickey that I was coming back because I want to learn. We have some engineers in that room with us, and it was, Tony probably could have stayed in that classroom the whole day.
I still want to be in that class.
Yeah, but it was great. And I, and I did, I did retalk to Ms. Hickey and and pass upon my appreciation and the time because what those students and what that staff did to prepare to host us while still running there every day curriculum, and several of them, as they were talking, picking up and running to the next thing because of how much they are for their students. So it was really amazing to see and watch and participate. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll go. Go ahead. I just want to thank the staff and some students and a few of the activities that I've been a part of, like Jen said, the MTSS over at Birch Grove, just made it in. Also participated in the curriculum, K through five night, egg drop challenge. With the real eggs, you know, at the Bryce, that's these days. It's pretty spectacular. It's cool to see different things for one of my younger kids, one of my older kids over there. And got to notice the Mileage Club is back. They're starting up Friday and Career Day. Like with TIS, it's Friday as well, so put those two things on the horizon for later this week. What to say. And attended the high school play. It's now very good production. So that would be very good to go and see. So.
So, and and I just want to make a comment, John. I want to thank you for your email. Paula, thanks for not replying yet. That's been a crazy week, but there's a line in there that, you know, honestly, I wrote down, I'm old, so I still write things down in my notebook. But you know, you say, you say in there that I know my money is teaching my kids, following my roads, enriching my community, and keeping my tap safe. There it is. And you know, you you fast forward to your question earlier today, and that's really what I know we've challenged our communication committee, our curriculum committee, that's been many a conversation, Dr. Willet, my theory conversations that we have weekly is how do we get that message out? Where not only the council, the decision-makers, the public, the the state representatives really know what those dollars are doing. And I take it back to these these instructional rounds, and you know, the board members up here were incredibly lucky because we get a school, we get the administration, the staff, we get a couple of those kids to take a complete half a day out of an insane, you know, schedule and sit down with us and walk us through what they do and how we do. You know, we, we went in, and I'm going to geek out with my engineer here, but you know, we went in that bridge, that bridge building class. We got room full of kids and popsicle sticks. And the teacher is up there setting up this students to get measured. And you know, next thing I know, I'm right up there at front. I'm looking at it. I'm going, how did she know to build trusses? And he's going, she figured it out. And it helped. And you know, I went home and I told my wife, I told my daughter about that. I was like, here's this student that built trusses, and it held forty, forty-two pounds or something like that. Her friends are cheering, and you could just see her glow. We go in later and we're talking to these kids that are not, they're not mindless automatons. They know what they want. They know what's enriching them. They know what's making them feel good and helping them reach, and they're telling us. We've got our amazing student representatives here that are truly representing the student body and telling us, this is what we need. You know, I went to the Wizards game. I took my my eight-year-old. Anybody that's met her knows she is not lacking for it to pin. The 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 teachers run in, and she jumps up on the bench, and she's screaming, you know, there's Mr. Mitchell, there's Mr. Mitchell. Every day when I'm going to lunch, he steps out, he gives me a high five. I can't wait to go to lunch because I know I'm going to see Dr. or Mr. Mitchell. And that enthusiasm carries for the rest of the day. You know, these are the things that our money is doing. And, you know, I recognize that dollars are a scarce commodity. You know, I live in town. I don't want to spend any more of my money than I have to either. But I recognize that if I want this, then I have to pay for that. We have to make decisions, not only as a district, and Dr. Willet is tasked on a daily basis to make tough decisions and figure out how to do more with less. But as a town, we also have to figure that priority. And the only way to legitimately and fairly look at our town council and our town manager and say, this is what we needed to do is to give them the information so that they truly know what we're asking them to spend money. Again, that line struck me, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
People, people want, people don't want to spend a lot of money, but people do want to invest money. And, you know, having been in the schools and talking with the, seeing the administrators, seeing the teachers and interacting with them and seeing how much they're committed to the students of, you know, my kids are in the schools, you know, my wife's a school teacher. Who, you know, spending money on education is an investment. And 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 it really, it really saddens me when I see eighteen percent show up for a budget vote. And then to get it, to get it up to twenty-one percent, this, these, this is the, this is the vote that affects you the most. Your town budget is what impacts you the most, and if people are watching or can get the word out, we need people, we need a hundred percent of this town to show up. And that should be the goal. You know, if you get to fifty, if you get to forty, whatever, but, but I mean, we, you know, eighty-five, ninety percent show up for a presidential election. And we don't, we don't show up for our own town. That's the, that's the question that I've, you know, I think I hit Dr. Withit. I've been doing this for six years now, and every year I ask you, how do we get the people that aren't on Talon Open Discussion? Right. You know, if you don't log on there, how do I get you this information? Because that's not the entire town. Right? So, okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, Dr. Willis.
Hey, Tony, really quick, you still have?
Dan.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Absolutely. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you so much. Just wanted to, at risk of going too long here, there's never enough time for thank yous, but the instructional rounds are just so tough to get to during the day, but just wanted a specific call out to the Birch Grove Parent Night. I had the pleasure of, my daughter's going into Birch Grove, and to the teachers that stayed, to the administration, curriculum advisors that stayed, it was an awesome event. I think my daughter is super excited to go, even though this was for the parents, but while our kids are excited to be going to kindergarten, it's nerve-wracking as a parent for sure. But coming out, my wife and I felt so much better about sending our kids to the school. So just a big thank you to everybody who stayed late that night because it's after hours. And it really helps parents like build confidence that they're going to a good place. So big thank you there as well, just to wrap up there.
Okay, Dan. And anybody that has not had the opportunity to meet Tom Swanson, there is somebody born to be in elementary school, of course.
I joke that he rides his unicorn on the rando. He's just the happiest.
That daughter is in TIS, but is still absolutely beyond the moon to see Mr. Swanson and try to give him a high five. All right, Dr. Willet.
Oh, I'm sorry, you did mention it, but I want to make sure it gets highlighted. The, I saw these fine folks over here at the Wizards game as well on Saturday. And the amount of people that I saw with the volunteer tags and the, and the yellow, you know, the yellow orangey, you know, slips on their chest. When I had some black football guys in high school volunteering, getting some community service hours and whatnot, and so, and the applause that the teachers got, and I think there were, I want to say eighteen or so teachers. You might have a better number for that than me, Dr. Willet, but that event was put on by the Talon Education Foundation, and it wasn't mentioned tonight. It was mentioned briefly, but I want to make sure they get their credit because they put on, I mean, and I have never been to a Wizards game before I got to participate this week, and it was unbelievable. It was so fun. So yeah, I hope they come back, and I hope to educate, and all that money goes straight back into kids and 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 the district. So so well done to them as well. So there's their recognition for this week's meeting.
Did you?
No, referee. Got my dance on. Mister, 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 um, oh my gosh. Oh my gosh, I'm blanking. Nope, never mind. There were some people not happy that it didn't cause some fouls, but that's okay, you know, but but again, the credit goes to those those people. The teachers, the staff, and Education Foundation. It was, it was amazing. Yeah, it was so fun. It, that was so fun. I want to go back. I want them to come. So, thank you.
All right. Move on to committee reports.
Communication.
We're passing this month, taking the month off.
Okay.
Scheduling and the budget and all kinds of other things happening. We'll catch back next month. Unless Jen has anything with BTO besides the Mileage Club.
And a lot of other things to say.
Understand.
Curriculum, we met today before this meeting, and we had a great discussion on grants and how we apply for them, how we go out and get them, who goes out to to get them. So it was a a good discussion to show us the process and how it ties into curriculum.
Met today. We talked about a couple of different updates. We have some legal updates that would be presenting to leadership for the next board meeting. We talked about summer meetings. And then Jaden, we spent all some ideas of some different policies that we wanted to put on our agendas, and Jaden has some ideas that we're going to put on our next agenda meeting. So we're trying to keep it brief and streamlined right now while we're wanting to collect.
FFC.
I'll bring a report to our next FFC meeting when I'm not, when I'm actually there in person. Thank you.
Negotiation.
We wrapped up the secure secretary negotiations, and we have a tentative agreement, so stay tuned for that.
All right, thank you all. Moving on, chairperson's report. Yes, Bill, I kept it brief. Ish.
I'll be the judge.
All right. So, more on what we were talking about. I do not envy the position that the town councillors are in. Tasked with determining a budget that supports the needs of the town, they have to make decisions based upon information that is presented to them. They have to ask the necessary questions. They have to come together and deliberate, but ultimately they have to trust that information presented is developed and presented with integrity and a focus on purpose. Earlier this week, councillors on both sides of the aisles commented on the process that asked the board to present a budget focused entirely on the educational needs and asked the council to deliberate that budget based only on town needs. How can we expect the town council to understand what those numbers really mean? How can we expect them to understand the effect of reducing a foreign language teacher without hearing that middle school student talk about exploring a global society while relying on Duolingo to learn how? How can we expect the council to understand a reduction in computer teachers without hearing the teacher that passionately explains creating a curriculum around programming a monkey trying to get a banana? How can we ask the council to understand the importance of each room of our facilities without showing them the miracles that our students create on the stage, in the kiln, or in the choir room? We had the opportunity to watch a young man glow as he told us about the video that he created to help us understand Unified Arts. I then saw him float around the gym, capturing the moments of our Wizards event. I spoke to a young adult as he showed us his sculptures that led him to an opportunity for advanced education. How can we expect the council to know the priorities of the town if we don't help them here? Like any of the other portions of the town budget, we, the board, create a budget request based upon our knowledge and the absolute expertise of our staff. The only way this works is if it is received with the same spirit of truth that it is presented. Tonight, we have the opportunity to once again fit into that process. The budget number that we have has not been decided. We will not make any final decisions tonight. Tonight, we will discuss what the effects of a reduction from our budget request to the currently proposed numbers would be. We will ask the difficult questions and deliberate with respectful discretion. My ask is that we all take the action to take what we discussed tonight and help it be heard. Thank you. All right, Dr. Willet, the fun part.
Just want to be sure. Do you want to, do you want to do this or educational reserve fund?
I want to do this.
Yeah, sure.
No, appreciate it.
So at this point, you know, there there are no.
Let me make one comment, one real quick, I'm going to. Again, and I want to point out in here, like I said, the number that we Uh, again, and, and I want to point out in here, like I said, the, the number that we have has not been approved by the town council. What we have is the town managers proposed by. We are not going to exit tonight with direction to say, yes, these are reductions we have, that's not the goal. Tonight is to talk the reductions that it would take, opportunities, ideas. To really try to get that information turned up in this guy.
I, I want to reiterate that too, that, uh, there is, there is nothing that has been determined. And that the process we're in, as the board requested, there are no. Uh, you know, pre-formatted options, there's just discussion. So the, you know, the, the items that are up for reduction, you know, there are many items listed that are part of the superintendent's. Proposed budget that was eleven point one percent. The items that are part of the board event budget that are seven point three four percent are there. And then there are many, many items, you know, that the Board of Education would be talking about tonight. There's no easy way to get from seven point three four percent to two point nine nine percent. So that, I just stating that outright, you know, um. So the board has been having some discussions with respect to how that might happen and, and at this point, I'm here to answer questions for you. And to try to help in any way that I can. Uh, I think that, um, with respect to where you end tonight. And I think that we, uh, at this point, other than the discussion that you have about the various items. I don't think that we should be publishing any final document unless you actually intend to have that completed by. So I'm just here to act as a resource while you have that conversation, you have information available to you. And you let me know how you want to.
So what I'd like to do, and I completely agree, you know, I'm not going to call for any vote. What I would like to do is I'd like you to go through, I know you prepared the, a, a series of potential reduction ideas.
All things.
What I'd like you to do is I'd like you to briefly go through that. Just what those ideas, what those things would be, what those numbers would look like from thirty thousand. And, and then I'm going to come to the board and give me, give everybody an opportunity to, to discuss, to bring up ideas.
Well, and so these are the results of many conversations that we've had going through the, the, you know, the year with respect to the budget. Um, you know, as asked to put a list together of things that you, that had been discussed in your past, future and now, so. Um, I think we should talk about them, but you're, you have access to that, I don't think you should publish anything. Unless you have a decided, unless you've decided. So, um, do you want me to go through everything from the SPB all the way through or just the most? So. One possibility, and these are all things that have been thrown out there, you can consider and chew on them. Um, additional E chip offset, you know that we have insurance reserves. The one thing we could do is take more, uh, from the insurance reserves, we want to be careful not to take too much from that. But I would rather us taking, um, you know, and, and use some of the insurance reserves than to lose people. I think we've had a terrible insurance, you know, insurance year. And one of the most tragic things that can happen in my opinion would be, you know, losing staff because we had a bad insurance tier. So I think we should use it for the rainy day that we have. Uh, we have a great program, I mean, on average, it's five percent, you know, if you average it out over the last, whatever. Since twenty twelve, it's been an average of five percent, but this is a very bad year. So, you know, that's one thing we can do. Um, there are, you know, some opportunities here from the standpoint of, um, things that were in the budget. Secretary for curriculum, for instance, would remain ten months instead of being twelve, that would be something that could come out. Instead of, um, having a higher increase, we could do just a two percent increase for BCBAs, BISs, AVISs. The security officer, job coaches, P T O T I T and maintenance. If you limit it to two percent, you can pick up some funds there. Um, no one wants to see athletics, uh, be eliminated in any way. But this is a one point nine million to two million dollar reduction, so you'd have to talk about every. You know, every aspect of possibility here. So one possibility is the elimination of the middle school athletics program. Another possibility is the elimination of basically ninety percent of the, um, student clubs. And activities and go to a full funding model that, you know. That, uh, you could try it, try out, just having, you know, any board funding for that eliminated and then seeing whether or not. Um, we could sustain it strictly on what it would cost parents, which would be a lot more. Um, we have charged the F R, uh, there are services that we provide to our partners. And there are charges associated with those services that I would recommend that we, um, that we, uh, charge. And so for instance, uh, F R C, there are services we provide to the F R C, which is a self-funded program that is under our umbrella. And there are services in that could give us some revenue. And again, I'm looking for anything to try to avoid personnel. Uh, professional development reductions in that. Um, we have to keep obviously a certain amount of professional development because there are certain things that staff have to have. And there are certain requirements that we have to live up to, but making reductions there. Um, para vacancy, uh, most of those eliminated, um, any, you know, any, um. T A, uh, differentials, there are some, there are some money there with respect to the vacancies that we could just make some assumptions on hiring. Whenever we make assumptions that we're going to hire at a certain level, if we don't hire at that level, we end up being. A little bit underwater, so we ought to be careful, but making some measured assumptions and, you know, again, I would rather not lose people. I'd rather make a less conservative assumption and then cut people, we can avoid it. Um, so there's vacancies that we would assume hiring a different, you know, less. Maybe not as, at M A seven, maybe M A, you know, M A lower than that, M A three. Um, E R F utilization, use another one hundred thousand out of the E R F, you know, E R F. In this case, we would use it to offset the educational technology initiative. That was one of the reasons I was just going to throw E R F first, because you could see how much we have, but we could put another hundred thousand towards it from E R F. Um, Mission Square is a forfeiture account for insurance for, um, for, um, non-certain employees. And so there's some money that we can, you know, allocate out of that. Uh, we would pre-invest in I X L and explore programming. And that could offset our next year's budget, we pre-invest in custodial suppliers. We would reduce two more buses from the fleet, this would be a total reduction of four buses from the fleet. Um, this will put us back in the place that we were a few years ago, and so we can expect that to have some residual effects. Um, they will probably run routes really tight on time. But again, you know, if we're able to do that, there's a fuel cost savings to that, there are, you know, since we do. The contracts for buses on a daily rate, um, you know, you have a bus for the day, no matter how many routes you run. But if we have fewer buses, there's a savings involved, uh, so that's, that's recommended rather than losing more people. Um, the pathways program, I have funded that for years outside of the operating budget. We were hoping to expand that, put it in the operating budget to actually, you know. Actualize it as part of our budget-supported, uh, programming. Uh, we would take that out, try to do my best to find alternative, uh, funding. Edge annuity, um, this is a program we use for students that are in credit recovery, are special programming through I E Ps. Uh, we would reduce that, um, and it would be less of an opportunity to use it for kids that are expelled and things like that. And we'd be taking a chance on not having as many kids or any kids expelled. Um, intra-district tuition adjustment, um, these are all things in response to what board members have talked about. And so board member brought that up, Mr. Bodie, and, you know, we made an adjustment to the intra-district tuition, um, for that. And again, these are all things that have been brought up at one point or another that we're trying to put on, you know, put out there. Most things have been brought up. Paper pallet pre-investment, we only have so much space, but we want to pre-invest. Um, for paper to the extent that we can store it and it doesn't, you know, rot or become a problem, and that's about what we can do for that. Uh, co-teaching, you know, this is a very important program, you all know the importance of it, many of you have. Uh, been involved in some aspect of it or heard about it. And the, uh, instructional rounds at the end of the year will be, uh, about co-teaching. Uh, but I would seek alternative sources of funding for co-teaching, this would still leave some money in the budget for it. Um, but I would also be looking for some alternative funding. And this is usually our partnership with Eastcon that costs some of the money. We have, you, we have an excellent relationship with Eastcon, there's a Dr. Jacqueline Dubois who helps us. And she's involved in the district in our co-teaching processes. Uh, I would look for alternative funding, there's still some left in the budget with this, but I would also look for some alternative funding. But it, it would come, that chunk would come out of the operating budget. Um, there'd be equipment reductions, you can see what those equipment, I won't go through all of those because it would take an hour, but you can take a look at that. We would reduce what we use for community workshops, um, power school support. We have individuals who every year have to go for training for power schools so that we. Uh, can keep that software updated to everything that changes in the state and information requirements and. Uh, equity reports and all these things that have been done. We would take a year off of that in the hopes that the training we've done throughout the last few years would be sufficient. Um, and then we would just try to get help from other districts, um, you know, for some of the changes that occur. We can't do that forever, we could do it for a year because, uh, we can try to work with some of our partners, um. But that would come out potentially, and some of these other things are workbooks and some additional supplies that didn't make it into the tab. Um, M T S S stipends, you know, we got to the point where we're getting one point nine million dollars. We're not going to get there without doing some of the things that were in the superintendent's budget. Um, this was discussed and this would be coming out of the budget that I recommended. Um, you know, it's just hard to get there, um, so these are things that were discussed. Increasing pay to play by a hundred dollars. Uh, Talon already has a pretty high pay to play, but this would leverage, assuming you got at least or close to the same number of athletes. You would get some money to offset sports. Uh, if you look at one of the other tabs, because this was another thing that was discussed by the board or a question that came up. What would the cost of athletics be to our students if it was fully funded by parents? It would be about one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars per sport for parent, for, uh, uh, student. Uh, so this would not be that high, but, um, this would leave a lot of funding, you know, that is in our operating budget. But an increase to three hundred dollars for pay to play would give, uh, more money into that program. And provide an offset to your budget, assuming that we get the same number of players, which we might not, because if the price goes up, it might go down. But we take a chance, again, these are assumptions. One of the S R O positions of the two, um, would be, um, would be. You know, out, would, would, we would keep in mind that for the future, we, that would leave you still with one S R O full position and a security officer. Some transport adjustments, uh, T A step adjustments, um, those provide a little bit of money here and there. And then, um, you know, again, nobody wants staff reductions, this is the worst possible thing whenever we have to do it. Uh, you know, obviously I don't recommend it, but, uh, staff reductions that have been out there potentially. Um, and you have discussed some of them in the past. Uh, some reduction to secret, there would be no unit really, um. It might not be impacted in your season, but, um, secretary considerations, there would be potentially some. Uh, reductions in secretaries sharing of positions, uh, custodian reduction or reductions. Social worker would be out that was being recommended. Uh, you noticed that we are, uh, cut the L P N, um, out of the budget at one point in, in the process. And this would take more of the L P Ns out, there would be sharing of nursery sources between buildings. Um, potentially buildings that would lose teachers. Now again, when I say this, uh, you can't get an exact thing because people have similar certifications. So it would not be, you know, if you reduce a position, say at Birch Grove. People might have the same certification and the bumping, the person that gets, you know, eliminated, if it is one. Might be somebody in a different building, but a position might be reduced in, in, you know, another building. So a potential reduction at B G P D, um, a potential reduction at T M S. Uh, possibly, um, three teacher reduction at the high school based on your review of, um, enrollment information. Um, and. And I think that that's about it at this point, running through as much as I can. There are tabs there and I'm not going through everything in the tabs. Uh, you can, you know, you can take a look at the rest of that, but it's, it's mostly material oriented.
So just a couple of questions, that's helpful before I get to the. I'm going to understand what you just said, just to, to back brief here. We're talking a reduction from the Boards of Education's proposed budget to the current two point nine nine. Uh, it's just over one point nine million dollars.
Right, one, one million nine hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars.
And based on the, the work that you're, you're currently and have been doing and I'm absolutely certain are going to continue to do with sharpened pencils. In addition to what I'm seeing is, is a rather significant equipment, uh, reductions and, uh. Some risk, assumption of risk, uh, from an insurance perspective, from a, uh, from a special education perspective and potentially from a. Windows supportability perspective, uh, there's really not a way to get there without doing. Staff and thereby program reduction.
I mean, athletics being one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars per student. You know, uh, these, these are, these are things you can consider, I obviously don't want to see staff reduced as, and I don't think anybody does. One point nine million dollars with this included staff. And if you don't, you know, you're going to, uh, you're going to have to figure out other options. But, but the problem is, we have a process problem because, um, you're in this position each year. And I think there's some process issues with that, um, and that we should work on, uh, uh, you know, how. Uh, this process occurs in Talon because it feels like you're giving a budget in due diligence and, you know. You're forced to be in this situation, but to answer your question that that is what you have in front of you, or these reductions, these reductions do include potentially some staff. And I leave it to you, let me know how you would like to perceive it.
Absolutely, absolutely, and, and you know, as we articulated earlier in this meeting, you know, my intention here. Is not only for us to better understand, but also for the council to understand, you know, we, we talked. Last year and I know data, we've talked a, a couple of years as we've gone through this process in trying to make. The adjustments here that aren't irreversible. You know, and I know we looked at, you know, buying additional paper and we can pre-buy it now. We save a little money, what we do is then create a gap later, but you know what, hopefully next year is better, uh, we said that last year. Looking at these, my interpretation is that we've reached the point where we've run out or are running out of those things we can do. That can be reversed.
Yes, I mean, you, there's many examples of that. Where at this point, um, you know, we have used those strategies in the past and we try to use them, but they do haunt us. And, uh, athletics transportation is one of those. It was low balled in previous years and then we got nailed with it this year and we have a higher figure. Some things look like they are more than a hundred percent increase, but that's almost always or ninety percent of the time. That's because we did some kind of pre-purchasing in prior year. I think you've tried every strategy that you can, remember that your budget has had an average of about one point seven three percent. Over twelve years, something like that, right? I mean, you have, uh, it's been a difficult job for the board and, um, yes, that's true.
Well, and, and I'm worried about, and I know you've thought about it, but again, just to, just to throw it out there, I'm worried about the secondary and tertiary effects. The, I, I think as we, you know, as we were in that, that instruction round the other day and they were telling us about. Instruction around the cer, the cycle and, you know, they're in each one for a certain amount of time. Um, but if one of these reductions affects that balance, then all of a sudden the amount of time that they're in there changes. And we have to redo what was a curriculum, that, that was, we, we incur costs in our attempt to.
Right, so an exa, example would be that if you look at the clubs, there, um. There are, uh, many club, many club possibilities, but, uh, some of those clubs offset. You know, cost in other ways, and so you have to be very careful about what you reduce because you might actually increase your cost. By reducing certain things and that, you know, that's something that we really have to be mindful of. You know, so if somebody were to completely cut an internal program, if that internal program is a cost avoidance program. You're going to have double or tripled our expense within a year or two. And that is something we have to be very, very careful. Our staff and our programming is our most valuable asset and, and they, you know. Our staff and our programming is our most valuable asset and and they, you know, our students are our most crucial clients. And we've got to do everything we can to minimize the impact wherever we.
And and just to to tug on that tree a little bit, a little bit further. You know, we've looked at the middle school and the uh TIS and those type of things. But I think you were telling me in one of our other conversations about how that, you know, that domino over the next year affects. For example, if we, you know, by touching a foreign language in the middle school, when does that then kill something in the high school unintentionally?
It will. Anytime you don't have things like that starting in the middle, or if you only leave one or another, then essentially the one that you don't service will will be cut off from people uh go kids going into it and will ultimately suffer from that from an enrollment point of view at the high school. You know, um, everything affects everything else, right? It's like, uh, it's like a body, you know, you can't impact one area of the body without another area of the body being impacted. And so the overall health of the district, it 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 succeeds or fails based on how every other part of the district is going to. You know, so that that's true. And that what that is what makes the tasks you have in front of you extremely difficult.
I I'm gonna give up the floor. Jayden?
Yeah, um, I'll try to keep my questions. We we had a bunch of time to ask about the specific line items and the all the things. And so I'm not, and and you 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 answered some of the, you know, like I saw a power school on there and then it turned out to be it's a power school, I believe, training or something like that. So I'm not going to end up going into the line items, but I want to get some 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 stuff off my chest. Um, and then I'm happy to ask a a couple of questions. I think this uh, I'm gonna one-up you here a little bit in one case. Instead of a ten-year span, over an eleven-year span, Talon has had an average of one, not one point seven three, well, one point six two percent of an increase over the last eleven years. And we can look at competing, I say competing towns, towns, neighbors of ours. We can look at towns right next door to us that are in threes, that are in the high twos, that are in the low fours, Ellington being one of them, being in the in the three. Nowhere near Talon being at a one point six two and how embarrassing it was to come to that realization and how 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 much we're worse, how much uh, we're not helping children, I guess is the best way for me to put it, very kindly and very eloquent. Um, so one point six two percent over eleven years. And yet we're still talking about, no wonder we're, I should say, we're talking about going into the ERF again. No wonder we're talking about reducing four buses. And the first thing I think of when I hear the bus conversation again is, you know, you know, and I know one of the things that always came up was was how many emails we got when the buses were running late. And to be honest, but to hell with the, to hell with the emails we get. Where I get frustrated are the people who, Tony, I think you were one of them, where your child is not getting off that bus until what time?
Hour and a half.
Correct. School gets out at what time? Three fifteen for elementary school? And the fact that kids are getting off the bus and getting right to dinner. Kids are getting off the bus and missing time with mom before she goes to work. Simple things like this. It's the human aspect of, I think, education. It's the human aspect of being on a board of education. It's a human aspect of being a town manager that has not been fully invested in over the last, I want to say, eleven years. And uh, how frustrating it is that we have to have people come in this room and 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 hope that they're they're saying something that's going to stick with us, that's going to stick with us. I'm pretty darn proud about how we go about our process yearly. What I'm not proud about is having a town council yearly, year after year after year, and a town manager who co-sponsors it. Who doesn't give a damn about what we're talking about. And I'm sorry to be so frustrated and animated about this, but I save it for this moment. So I'm not this way outside of these walls, I promise you. Just Monday, it was asked, how do we get to this? How do we get to this two point nine nine percent? And I don't know if at any point of the town manager, to be specific. Audrey's not going to want my recommendation. And I don't think anywhere in that answer was, yeah, we take the board of ed into we should be taking the professional's opinion in 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 into account. We should be taking the people who are spending hours each week, dozens of hours each month and diving into these line items. That's why I'm not going to ask you about these line items again, because you work too damn hard to keep going through the same stuff over and over again, just to be shot down for the things that the kids need. The process is flawed. Nowhere in this two point nine nine percent, and I know it's not passed, I know it's not passed, so I'm going to be very careful about how I express myself. But nowhere in this two point, where is it? Two point nine nine percent. In my opinion, not just as a resident, not just, excuse me, as a board of ed member, but as a resident of Talon for the last twenty-four years, my entire life. Nowhere do I think the town manager took into account the board of ed or the superintendent's input. And I'm not speaking for anybody else but Jayden Register in this in this scenario. And I hope everybody will express their opinions and and whatever. I'm not speaking for Dr. Willard. I'm not speaking for any of you. I'm not speaking for my good friend Lisa right here. I'm speaking for Jayden Register because it's frustrating as a former student, which is why a lot of these, a lot of these instructional rounds, it was interesting last year. I haven't been able to get to any this year. Last year I was able to get to the elementary school in the uh Birch Grove. I think it was the first full year Birch Grove might have been over, maybe the second full year Birch Grove was open because the middle school and the high school I'd actually seen relatively recently, believe it or not, because I'm I'm twenty-four years old. I was there, you know? Shame on me though, because of the one point six two percent over the last eleven years. I should know better that, yeah, they, since I've been there, some of the things, Mr. Schneider, I was happy to see to hear his name, frankly, and I and I wish I could laugh about it. I was happy to hear his name today. Happy to hear kids experiencing the same thing I did, learning how to use, I don't know what the saw was called because again, memory. But learning how to use a saw for the first time and 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 taking measurements and angles and and understanding how to, you know, I, we've still got a a thing in my our bathroom that my brother made in his class. That's about four foot by four foot. And it's these things that are going to get left behind. And so, Tony, I appreciate your question just a minute ago because this impacts that. That impacts this. Eventually, all of it is going to impact all of it. And I heard somebody, I can't, it might have been, it might have been Audrey. I I can't remember who said it. Talk about eventually we're not going to have a school district. It it might be hyperbole. It might be this, it might be that. To me, it's true. At at some point, the dwindling, just like you see in local towns and local, local leagues, uh, Bill, you know a lot about this. Uh, when you see leagues get less participation, less participation, eventually that's going to kill the league. So at some point you need something that's going to spark it. In my opinion, in this scenario, what that requires is more than people speaking up, more than people speaking out, but people taking action and and John, I completely agree with you, and voting. Voting for a referendum that they support. And so I'm a little frustrated because never have I seen a list. And Dr. Willard, I'd be interested to see if you put a list, although I know in twenty seventeen there was a point ten percent increase. There was, you know, all these different things. I have never seen a list like I see now, and I know it's not on the screen for everybody. There's a lot of red. A lot of red, a lot of reduce, reduce, reduce. So to put it bluntly, I'm frustrated. If that point wasn't received. Now a couple of questions. Full funding. The full funding model for clubs, what does that look like? So, for example, I know, I know DECA's national, you know, uh, uh, buy-in price is different from that of maybe a student council, you know, it are these different, you know, honor society, whatever it might be. It might be a different starting point that you have to start at in order to have a chapter or a or a local, um, local, a local club uh at 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 the at the school. What does a fully funded model look like for any average club in high school? You said a thousand dollars, that's almost twelve hundred dollars for sports, which is asinine. Fifteen hundred, thank you, fifteen, thank you, fifteen hundred dollars for sports, for opportunities for children to do something that they might not want to go, they might not want to go to school today, but damn it. I get to go see coach. I get to go to the field. I get to go work on my swing. Sorry, I got into it again. When I re-circle here, I appreciate you helping me there. How much do, what is a fully funded?
So if I just do so quick, I did that for athletics. I didn't get that, get to that. Do we have, um, four and five hundred and six hundred, about six hundred and sixty kids, six hundred and sixty kids, um, participating in your total general cost, it would be about two hundred and twenty-two dollars if you had no board funding. And I'm giving you a rough amount. You could, you could average out up to two fifty for a kid, maybe for a class. If you're, if they're funding it without anything being done at your operating budget.
And I heard it over there, per club, right?
That was, I meant my question, per kid, per club.
Per kid, per club.
Per kid, per club.
Two hundred and twenty-two, some fifty, roughly.
So, but this is, but the average is the fair, it is, is all I'm asking for right now, just because it's the simplest, you know, simplest w- way to get that answer. Um, imagine taking DECA, National Honor Society Student Council, imagine uh helping, helping students with disabilities, want to play a sport that they've never gotten played this, played before, all these different things. And you're paying three hundred dollars per kid, per club to do so. It's asinine. It's ridiculous. It's not something that Talon should be taking pride in, in my opinion. So, um, my second question here. Going back to those power school, the power school university reduction, I think it's fourteen, excuse me, thirteen thousand seven hundred. By getting rid of the trainings this year for staff to do, participate in those trainings, whether it's the power school, it could be, there's, there's other trainings in here and I'm going to do my best. If you can help me out here, let's see here. There were other trainings in here that I I
I mean, you can look at, if you look at the conference travel contracts.
There you go.
Different things that would go, um, certain things that are contractually obligated to people, individual contract people like me are being taken out there.
So that's my question. What does that mean? If they're contractually obligated, we're taking them out?
Well, that's for somebody like me. I'm giving it up.
I hear.
But other people, the training is uh not something, you know, you'll notice that under that tab, they're contractual, but the only people that that that's me.
But how many years have you done this now? Because it's in 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 consecutive. Taking, taking a smaller increase, not just in your, in your contract, but also in 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 the trainings that are are contractually obligated to you. How many years have we been on this stretch here? I've been on the board for four years.
It's a couple of years, yeah.
A couple of years. I'm going to go with two or two, two, three years consecutive, never mind the last, I don't, I think you've been fourteen, fourteen, fifteen years as superintendent. So I don't know before that, but the last, since I've been on the board, I feel like this comes up every year. Where to satisfy a budget that the board of ed does not condone or support, at least at first. Dr. Willitt has to take from himself to give, you know, it's it, we're putting people in situations. I don't know how we have the quality of staff that we still have, to be frank with you. And that includes our superintendent. That includes our superintendent. But going back to, for example, the um, the uh power school trainings. If he does not get those trainings this year, or if if those people who require those trainings this year do not get them, what does it look like for the next year after that? I think, again, somebody mentioned, you know, we try to stock up beforehand. It's hard to do that with training. So, so what does that look like?
Well, again, you know, I'd rather do that than those people, but what I would say is, so uh, we we use software that interacts with power school. There's one called Flever. There's, there's all these different things that your individuals have to be trained in how to make sure that power school can, you know, import and export data. There's a um, the there's a report right now that's a really big one. We have to uh create a lot of data for, I'm trying to remember what it is, but it's um, it has to do with um compliance with the federal government with respect to um all of the stuff the federal government wants. So that would be an example of, you know, Power School University would provide trainings and how to make sure that you can import and export the information from the federal government. And having that training is important because you can really screw that up. And, you know, we have had that training. We would take a year off the training and ask our friends. But we can't ask our friends forever because being in the training is much different than getting it second or third hand. It's ten times harder to do it that way. So we'd be hoping that, you know, we've gotten the benefit of a few years of that. We'll take a year off of it. It it may impact our efficiency. We'll have more problems to solve on our end. We take on more weight for solving those problems and we may miss a deadline or two. So if the board chair gets a communication that we missed a deadline on a federal report, I mean, it might happen because we're doing our best, but um, but we're not cutting people.
What is missing a deadline?
Most of the time it's just you get a slap on the hand, you missed the deadline. But sometimes they'll send a communication to the board chair saying, you, we haven't done it yet, Mr. Hold has not received that because we we are on it, but I also know that we're on it because I can turn to the IT people and I can say I want that exported and imported by X and Y date. And if there's an issue, we have meetings to discuss it, but if they don't have all of the training that they need to do that, or there's been changes they're not available of, then we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna have to solve that problem, which will take time. And that time might push the deadline past its uh, you know, past the date we would typically need to have it by. So there'll be little things, you know, the buses will run a little slower, we might be missing a deadline, but it's better than losing your interventionists or or, you know, people that are in a classroom, you know, or any, any of the people that support your kid, our kids. Um, so I I would gladly give up power school, even though I know the IT people will probably take the air out of the tires of my car right now when saying that. But, you know, we don't want to lose people to, you know, and that would be one way of helping not do that if we take things from areas like that.
So again, you're prioritizing people here, which I just, I want to make sure that 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 constant variable here gets gets mentioned with, you know, the prioritization of people in the buildings in front of the kids with the, with with children, with students, helping them be better human beings, be better students. A couple, a couple more, and they're very surface level, uh, just out of curiosity. When was the last time the fund balance was utilized specifically on the board of ed side? Brian, I appreciate your point before that it's been utilized recently. Just maybe not on the board side per se, you know, maybe for something else or this or that. I, you know, I don't know enough. I'm on the board of ed and I wish I knew. When, when was the last time? I won't give a specific number, but a large chunk of 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 town funds, and they, and you may not know this off the top of your, which I don't blame you, was used to to help the board of ed offset some of these reductions that perceived any year like this.
I mean, I, I, the only thing I can think of is a few years ago during COVID, there was federal money that, you know, we all used to offset things.
Yeah.
Um, but I I can't think of.
Before then, maybe. Not before then.
No, I, no, I mean, I would say the town does a great job of supporting capital projects and things like that. The town side has its role, the board side has its role. I I can't make it.
Uh, I will let you have your opinion on what a good job, I guess, I guess means. Um, specifically when it comes to capital projects, I might agree with you. When it comes to helping the Board of Education fund a district for children, I uh, I'm not there. My last question, um, how much, very surface level, how much is left in the ERF after? After, after, I think it's a hundred thousand. Hundred thousand in the red here.
That's your next agenda item, but um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, don't be sorry. That's, that's what I was wondering is one, basically balanced after fiscal year twenty-six allocation. If you're going to make an allocation, um, you know, to to technology and energy and so on, uh, balance after those allocations would be a hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Um, that includes the seventy-six thousand, two hundred and forty-seven you'd be moving in.
At the end of this year.
So your next, you know, one of your next orders of business would be to move the money into the ERF. If you do that, the money going out, money going in, we'll leave you with about one nineteen. Now, if you have any of your funds, according to uh the uh CGS ten two forty-eight A, the board can now transfer any, any amount of funds up to two percent into the ERF from any end of your bill.
And that's what, that's our leader.
Yeah, and and I'm sure we'll talk about, yeah, and I, well, like almost guaranteed we'll talk about it, you know, and whatnot, but but how often do we have so much wiggle room to even get up to a full two grand percent?
Now, that, that actually, just as a caveat, we, that's, we didn't, we're not at that item yet and we'll talk about it more, but you can't get those funds until the third quarter of the next fiscal year, which is why you can't really count on it for a budget discussion.
That's all. I uh, that's all. I I I, if I don't get another chance to speak again, let me make myself hopefully as clear as, you know, I don't know how many of these budget cycles left I'll be a part of. I don't know how many. What I do know is this is the worst list I've been, I've seen in the four years I've been on this board of ed. The worst list I've seen as a graduate of Talon High School is the worst list I've seen even from when I, when I started paying attention while I was still in school. This list does nothing to help to students that were just sitting in front of us. This list does nothing to help the students of the people who are sitting in the audience. The list does nothing to help the people who are watching on online. And sure, it keeps teachers, it keeps people, it keeps the people in our buildings, which is the priority here, which I hope people are understanding. Which is the priority here, which I hope people are understanding, you know, at least from what I, what I'm seeing, my, my perspective, that our superintendent is going you know, above and beyond to make sure this is, you know, people, people above all, um, I'm frustrated. I, I don't think the board of Ed was taken into account with this process. I think we, I'm not gonna say wasted, but I think a lot of time was spent that could have been spent either with the town council. Or shoot, get rid of the joint, the joint discussions between the town council and the board of Ed, if you're not gonna listen to anything we're talking about. That's my opinion, and I'm happy for the town council to come sit in these chairs and join us, I'm happy for us to go, whatever, but it, it's getting to a point where I feel like we're wasting breath, and I feel like they're wasting their breath, and I hope, I don't wanna keep wasting these people's time and keep showing up to these meetings. And expecting a different result, because literally the definition of insane. And it, it's gonna drive people nuts, if it's not already, so driving me nuts, so. That's all. I appreciate it. Got it, Al, thank you, thank you for your, really.
And I just had a couple of things, I, uh, Jayden already asked about the clubs, cause I was wondering about that, like, how could we you know, keep those, fund them? I was curious about the bus. I was just doing a little bit of math, and it looks like for next year, one bus is four hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-eight cents per day, times two, times a hundred and eighty days is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine seventy-six. Plus fuel of roughly ten thousand, cause it was around five thousand, that comes to one eighty-seven, nine seventy-six. We're reducing by one twenty-three, which is a difference of sixty-four thousand.
Because the contract, it, it goes through the whole thing. You, you can't, it's not the total bus cost, the more buses that you reduce, you get.
We're getting sixty-four thousand dollars for taking off two more buses?
Yeah, it doesn't work like that, if you read through it, we don't get that amount for every bus reduced. Because they have to plan way ahead of time, so the more buses are reduced, the greater, it, it has less of an impact than a total bus, um, every rate. Amount, it doesn't work like that. So that they incentivize you to keep the number of buses you contracted for, because you get, you don't get the same impact as a total, you know, one full bus when you start to reduce buses. That's why that amount is not that, that exact number. You don't get the same impact, and that's, they do it, so you.
I, I would be interested to know what that number is, cause that, that sounds like a huge difference.
That's what's in there, that's the number.
Okay, so it's gonna go from four ninety-four thirty-eight to something?
So here's the actual price sheet.
If you want us to run the numbers, I'll show you them, but the amount that I have in here is what you would get back from a two-bus reduction. You can, we can give you the numbers later about that. Contract does have, have provision in it that tries to make, disincentivize you from reducing buses because they have to plan the fleet that they went, and that's where you're getting knocked off some of the bucks there. Now, we, you know, you, you get more from reducing two than you do from reducing one, that's the thing. One would be even less, right?
Okay, um, I think that's it for the moment.
Mr. Thompson?
All right, some of the questions I've had been answered already. So, uh, I'll touch base on the lawyer and legal fees. Um, I saw that there was a line item, a letter in the, uh, BOE question regarding, uh, the cost for the lawyer, uh, per hour. I thought I, I believe it was, somebody had mentioned, uh, several meetings ago, that we were at a kind of a set rate, cause I was asking how many, you know, we start doing, whether we do adjust six policies in a year versus sixteen policies, uh, I was told, oh, you can just pick and choose, we pay one price plus that and the other, but apparently, according to that letter, it seems like we're paying per hour for each policy that we are adjusting on top of other legal, um, issues that may arise for the district. Again, clarification on this, whether we have a set price or actually paying per hour?
You pay per, per hour for legal advice. You do get access to their module and model policies, though, for just being a client. Whether they build that into the hourly price or not, I mean, all companies do something like that, but. So I'm just saying that, you know, no matter what law firm, you're gonna have an hourly rate for the attorneys for their legal advice.
So just for clarification there, not every policy that the policy committee adjusts has to have legal review.
That's true, right.
Some of them are just taken out of that, that, that model policy, a counter library that we have access to. Some of the policy adjustments just come from that, we don't get charged an hourly fee for Jessica to review it, because it's already been done in that library.
Are they not reviewing it before we put it as an official policy then?
Some of them, like, if we take their model policy and we essentially replicate it, then we don't send it back for them to review, they've replicated.
So the library has been reviewed and approved?
That's from them, they're, they're experts.
I just wanted clarification on that, because if that was the case, they're gonna say, maybe we can limit how many policies we're adjusting. But I, I understand the, the, the pay structure now, thank you. So, I know I went on the, uh, the intervention support, the other, uh, the MTSS at Birch Grove. On the walkabout, uh, with the wonderful staff and the teachers and saw the students interacting and how the operation went from level one, two, and three. How is any of that going to be, what, what, are there any effects on this budget towards that process that we saw? Uh, Jen, so I think it was about a month ago now, are any of these things going to affect the learning of these intervention for their youngest and most needy children as far as the beginning learning year?
Yes, yeah. Last of any kind of, uh, teacher, you know, basically, you're asking about the early years, so there's two.
I asked what?
You're asking about the early years, right?
Yes.
So any reduction in the, in the K-five level is early years, the answer to your question is yes.
Well, uh, I'm not just talking about, like, my kid goes to math, he's excellent at math, I, I mean, he's gonna learn what he needs to learn, I'm talking mainly on this intervention level. The, the MTSS that we saw, the walkabouts, how kids come off in the morning, they go drop their stuff at the at their rooms, they come back, they do three, four, five minutes in one room, they might go back to the room, they might go to another room where there's other intervention people, cause they need help, and not just math, but maybe reading, or, you know, they just need the one, and that's it for the day. That, that sort of thing with whether they're in the computer lab or in the specialized rooms. And how's that all play into whatever might potentially be lost on this current list?
So some of what you observed was tier-one support, right?
Yes.
You know, when they use the software and they differentiate.
Yes.
People, kids doing different things. So if we reduce the classroom teacher, um, you know, what will happen is it's, it's more, more kids for fewer teachers, which will push up those sizes. They're the, you know, if, if it's not an interventionist, which hopefully wouldn't be, because of what you're saying, and, and again, when I say hopefully it wouldn't be, I, I just I don't hope it would be any of, any teacher, but, um, the classroom teacher reduction would impact most tier-one support. And the interventionist you're speaking of will still be in place, if you're taking a classroom teaching. But it would still impact MTSS because tier-one support is part of MTSS. Those sizes get bigger, it's even harder in that classroom to accommodate all the kids. You know, so you saw a classroom that had X class sizes, those class sizes would be higher. And so, you know, that, that means when you go look at the software and other differentiating tools, we gotta be very careful not to eliminate the tools that allow them to differentiate, like the X, iXL, you know, the edlearn, you know, these are the things that you witnessed them using.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, I'm not being glib when I say that, I'm answering yes, because it would increase class sizes, no matter what direction you point.
No, I want that, uh, no, that's what I'm looking for.
So that's where you'd see it, is in that tier-one support, when you're in that classroom, which would be a larger class.
Okay, okay. Now, just to be clarif- clarify, though, those, the programs that were used for this are still in the budget, correct?
You'll notice that we do some pre-investments, and that's to try to keep those things in. Now, what you're doing is what Mr. Hold talked about in the past, is we kick the can, cause next year, the, the budget will come and that price tag will still be there, but we will have, uh, lowered the coming year's budget by the pre-investment. And that's when you get hit with, whenever we do that, that's when we face it. But yes, that has pre-investments into next year to try to help keep those things while reducing next year's budget. And when next year comes, the objective there would be hopefully we don't have such a bad insurance year. You know, maybe we, we can then, when you look at next year, you'd look at it and say, why do you have a one hundred and fifty percent increase in, you know, iXL or whatever, and it's gonna be because last year we pre-invested and artificially lowered the amount, you know?
Yeah, I, I do understand that, all right, thank you for answering that.
Yeah.
So the other thing, I know there was some discussion, I think it was Janet telling you, I apologize for Dana, I was somebody on that side of the room. Regarding the language, sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, you know, you know, I just lost the hip there, uh. This, uh, uh, language, so like, my son, I, I know there, I think it was talk about how middle school. You know, we lose, uh, if, if potentially there was a language loss, that language has dawned down, the study of languages. French, Spanish, Latin, whatever it might be, moving into the high school levels and whatnot. Uh, puts them at, uh, you know, slight disadvantages, the longer years of learning. Um, I know my, both of my sons have been put through the, um, cause my wife speaks Spanish. Admin on them learning Spanish, but they've been through three sessions every year that they've attended Birch Grove. They go to one, two, and three, they go to one, two, and three, they go to one, two, and three for all the sessions, year after year. Is it not po- and this is after school, so this is nothing that happens during the school yourself, cause there's no, you know, Spanish up or any language at the lower levels. And, you know, i- if there's going to be a potential loss here. If we can create some sort of club that would offer these after-school opportunities, just as there is for the younger children at these upper levels, I know it's not the most ideal situation, but it is potentially something that I believe that can be possibly put forward as a club, if there's that many people interested in French or Spanish or whatever might be lost. Provide this opportunity on an after-school club basis, to still get children. The learning of the language obviously might not be, you know, level one, top tier, but you at least get something to help improvise along the way till maybe they get to the high school, they'll have a better opportunity at the more full-time structured. Uh, more, more structured, I'm not saying the approach of Birch Grove Business Structure is just more of a learn, so, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. Something potential that could be done to help offset, we lose something, one area that could be put on as an elective after-school type thing, and I know that everybody's available after school, but, you know, we'll deal with whatever we're able to deal with. That was, is something I think we can think about. And also Janet mentioned, like, these kids, um, for coding and engineering and all of these other things that she had mentioned to possibly see about getting some of these clubs, obviously, we need to figure out how to pay for them, right? So, it's like, you know, what, what can we do to increase some of these things that some students might be interested in? But also have the students, you know, families participate in the contribution to pay for these items, if we can't afford it in the budget, maybe we can somehow, some way, you know, if we can't pay a hundred percent for it, but somehow, some way offer these things on an after elective-type program for coding or engineering or, or, or something that would, would still benefit in some way, but not, maybe not a hundred percent that we're wanting to, you know. Throwing out some ideas and thoughts, uh, along the way. But yeah, I'm, I am interested in bumping up the pay to play, I'm not interested in this tall middle school complete athletics program going down the tubes. So the FRC charges for district services, how would they, you're gonna, so we have thirty, thirty thousand on this line item. But how would those be passed along to the, um, students or families? Utilize the FRC or how would those, that thirty thousand dollars come? You know, how, how would the FRC pay for the thirty thousand that we're eliminating it from our budget, if we're still running the FRC program? Excuse me?
It's, it's revenue, you're charging the FRC for services. You're charging your own program.
So, uh, I, I guess the other call, the other, my thinking is you have to have enough to where we're having the FRC still be a cost-effective way for students to utilize after-school versus other potential after-school programs that we might get zero dollars. Yes, so we have to ensure that we have a fine line in what we're still charging versus what people can get possibly elsewhere.
It shouldn't impact what they charge. Excuse me? Uh, it should not impact what they're charging you. It's us charging our own, it's like you have three corporations, you have the major corporation and two subsidiaries. And then your major corporation starts charging the subsidiary for services to put money into the major corporation, okay? You're charging your own entity, it's not part of your operating budget. Uh, it's a reasonable thing that you could do, and so you're taking in revenue to offset your own budget. You can't do that with some, which you can do that there to an extent. And so I wouldn't go beyond that, but, uh, that would be an amount that is reasonable to charge um, the entity. Because you, we do provide those services, it's a way of giving your revenue. It's, it's trying to work outside of the box, so that we don't have to reduce people, you know, in a tough year.
I think it's important to know, Brian, and you said, I kept saying after-school, so FRC yields revenue in for their full preschool programs and their after-school.
Okay.
So, they charge for, there's like three preschool programs during the day.
Yeah, I forgot about those, I apologize.
So they have, they have revenue coming in via the preschool and via the after-school.
Okay.
So, and they're utilizing our building, so then we would be charging them for some of the things.
Like, yeah, other towns have been brought up that have charged preschool, we actually do have that kind of thing, we just have it under a different umbrella.
Okay.
So it doesn't hit your operating budget, we, we can collect.
All right. That, that, that's, that's, that's fine, thank you for that. But I know you had mentioned, Mr. Bodie had done this, inter-district tuition adjustment for a hundred and five thousand, how does, what is the, the adjustment that we're making for this to?
Mr. Bodie had brought, brought up in the past, like, we, in the past, um, we would budget for the full amount that we assumed we would be charged. This year, we got a break from the state, plus fifty percent of the cost of it.
Okay.
And we don't pay per day. Uh, we can't always make an assumption that just because it happened in one year, for instance, we, you know, this, the, the state is giving forty million dollars to a hundred and sixty-nine districts this year. That's what they're doing this year. We, uh, I wouldn't recommend banking that the state will do that next year, cause it's just said it will do it this year. But what we would be doing is taking a risk and assuming, and saying we're gonna assume we're going to get the same deal this year, or next year that we got this year. But you're taking a risk.
Yeah.
It's a calculated risk, but
Yeah.
Again, I'd rather take a calculated risk than lose people. Uh, but you have to take a calculated, you know, these are calculated risks, um. If it turned out to be the, the full cost, then we would be looking, we might have a very early freeze next year. If these things didn't go in the direction that we had hoped, we would be freezing things very quickly. The worst, worst-case scenario, if you overdo it, is you might have to make reductions enforced during the year. So we don't wanna take too many risks.
I, I, I completely understand. Um, all right, thank you for that. So I did wanna talk about, I know it's not a popular opinion, but I did wanna throw it out there about, uh, possibly merging the bus routes. For the middle school and the high school. Potential savings, I don't know what that exact savings would be.
See, I, I don't think you're gonna get it, cause it's a, uh, savings, it's a daily rate. So, you're paying the daily rate for the buses regardless of whether you run three or two or four. And so, if you take, you know, if we take a certain time period and we put more kids to pick up in that time period. Then inevitably, there will be more stops. And if you're doing a daily rate, you're paying the daily rate for the number of buses you have, unless you buy your own fleet. That's one of the ways out of the woods on this, cause bus companies make their money off a daily rate, and they also guarantee the number of buses they have, so you can't do too much with that. Now, first student's been great, um but as a reminder, we put out to thirteen companies, ten companies. Three came to the table, one bid, and that was first student. So we got a great deal from first student considering all of it, but their daily rate. So if we even, it would take a lot to try to redo schedules anyway, and even if we could, we're taking. More kids and trying to pick up more kids in a shorter span of time and paying the same daily rate. So it will not benefit us much to do that at all.
Yeah, but I I but what I'm, my my, my analysis from just my thought process, we're running. Like Birch Grove and T I S, they run two route, uh one one route for two schools, at at the schools. Just like it would be the other half. Now, my thought process and it would be an assumption, and that's why I looked for for the fuel alone. So if you ran eliminated entire run, I do understand only a few more stops and and whatnot, but. I would think the fuel alone, you you cut the fuel from having three runs around town, two runs around town. You know, you'd cut it in a third and say, even if you you lo- even if you you lost ten percent of that to extra stops, you're still saving. Twenty-five percent or twenty-three percent from from your fuel usage for the entire the school system.
Because you're going to run longer routes, you're eating some of that fuel.
Well, I just said ten percent.
Right, but but I, but I, you know, we can explore that for future, we don't have the data in this time span to really explore that.
Well, I emailed like six weeks ago, why can't we have the data at this point?
Let's let each other finish her.
Well, well, first of all, you know, six. So this kind of thing is billed in aggregate form like I answered today, we don't have it by plus. Okay, so that's one thing. Second, if you reduce the buses, you get about eight to ten thousand dollars of fuel savings per bus if you average it. That's what you get by reducing, say, two buses, right? So whether you're going to save much more than that on fuel, I mean, it may be, maybe there would be some additional savings, maybe not. We'd really have to look at that, and that would take more than six weeks to analyze, we would need to really look at it over a longer span of time. And at in the time span we have right now to make a decision, because we can look at it and analyze it with F F C for the coming year after that if we want. We can analyze anything, but we're not going to have enough information to 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 know that in this time span, we have to make a decision. So we can look at it long-term, but considering you save about eight to ten, if you reduce two buses, considering the factor you'd have to run longer routes. And considering that it would require quite a bit to change schedules, because that does have a lot of impacts. Usually, we don't change schedules in a matter of months, we look at it a year ahead, and have to plan out what that means. Um, because it does have un-unanticipated impacts. This is something we can look at in F F C for like a future year farther out and then get all the data and really look at that. But we really wouldn't be able to comprehensively know the impact of that between now and the time we have to pass a refer.
Well, I thought you had informed me that there was data, a program data that would run the routes.
You know, all the kids, and then it will run routes, but in terms of all the fuel-related savings and the impacts of schedules. That takes a longer period of time to analyze. C I A C, for instance, you can't push out, you know, you want to be careful about pushing out later or something like that. Picking kids up earlier has other impacts on routes, we would have to figure out what the impacts of changing schedules was. You know, we we don't have the data per bus for fuel like I like I had answered, so we'd have to, you know, start collecting it that way. We don't have the, we don't, we can't do it by the time of the referendum to be able to plan a budget. We would have to do that a year out, which we can do, but. You probably, um, you know, it's not something we would have solid answers on between the times, you might have to formulate your budget. I mean, I I that you you, listen, I'm telling you very directly what I can, what we can and can't do, you can accept it or not, but that's what I'm. I'm giving to you, it's the answer to your question.
Well, I, this is, it's like, to gather the fuel data. And divide it by the number of routes and the number of buses you're running, how hard is that to to figure out? But they give me the data, I'll do it myself. I'm just frustrated, I mean, you act like this is so difficult, it's not.
Right, I appreciate.
It is not at all. I'm sorry.
I understand, I I think what 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 I'm hearing though is, it's not as simple as just a division. But there, in addition to getting the fuel data, uh there are those other considerations, the schedules.
I understand that completely.
The keeping kids on buses longer than an hour. It's just a bigger conversation than simply how much gas we'd save in a day.
If I thought it could save jobs, I mean, I I wish that was something that we'd be able to do in the time we were talking about. Because I would do anything to save jobs. I'm giving you just a frank answer because there's too much there, you have to look at it for the future.
Um, I'm looking at the uh the budget tool sheet that you sent out to us, and we've got in the uh. First, the the blue line of reductions.
That's already taken.
It's already taken, right, but we've got E chip insurance reserve, additional two hundred thousand, and then in the the first red. We've got a prepayment for E chip um with end-of-year funds of two hundred thousand dollars. So that's four hundred thousand dollars that were either prepaying or taking out of reserves for E chip. How much do we have in reserves for E chip? And.
Two point eight, you have a C D plus.
Now, that's just for talent, not for the whole E chip.
That's for our collective.
That's for the collective.
That's not for the entire E chip, but it's.
Okay. Okay. All right, and um that is where, that reserve is where all the claims come out of, or is that just? Literally exactly what it is.
Yeah, it's the reserve is the reserve.
Okay.
Claims come out of the money you put into the coming year, thus the prepayment.
Right.
If you make a prepayment, again, you're you're doing the same thing you would be doing with your software or something else.
Yeah.
You're are, you know, you're, you're lowering what you're paying by making it possible, but there's a couple of ways to do this, and. The the overall impact, though, of four hundred thousand is higher than I would ever have typically offered. And if there are some things that we will have to do to make, you know, to work through that. But again, it's it's there because I want to try to prevent, you know, bad insurance year, you've been losing tremendous, you know, staff.
And that reserve would be there if our claims that come in are higher than what we contributed for that year.
It would be, I mean, you're you're, you know, you're, you try not to take too much from that. And I wouldn't recommend doing this year over year like this. Um, but you have a bad insurance year and you have an insurance reserve, so. Now, you know, if you project out and, you know, we have the most catastrophic year ever, it would be pretty tight. But you you, the probability of you having the most catastrophic year ever is not strong, you know, so you have that reserve for a reason.
What's a comfortable reserve amount? What what's comfortable for a town to have in that account?
Well, I mean, we have always responsibly done um our budgeting to have a any reasonable reserve for each of. Not everybody has the reserve we have. Each, you know, we, in fact, one of our challenges has been that we don't want to have too much of a reserve. To to, you know, speak very frankly, four hundred is a lot. Would I do that every year? I would not want to do that every year. Do I think possibly, you know, we should look at it this year? Yes. Why? Because insurance is high as it is this year, and um you have it for the reason of offsetting when those, you know. Is it more than we have taken in the past? Yeah. Do I think it's going to bankrupt us? No. Do I think it's going to heat up your entire reserve and cause a catastrophic failure? No, I wouldn't suggest it otherwise. So I mean.
Well, as long as we don't go over the contribution, we're not even going to touch the reserve other than what we're doing right now.
Yeah, end of year, you either add or take from your reserve, and unless some, I mean, I can't even imagine. The scenario that would result in us bankrupt over this thing, but it it's more than I've ever suggested in the past. More than I think, you know, some people would be comfortable with, to be frank.
But you're comfortable with it because of the.
Because of the experience that I have watching this month, right?
Yep.
So, and again, everything we're doing, we're taking a certain, uh, you know, there's some risk involved with any decision we make.
Sure.
With all, you know.
You know, looking at the numbers, there's over six hundred thousand dollars in staffing reductions, so I don't want anyone to think that I'm doing little. Not talking about staffing reductions, because that's just insurmountable, um, I don't know what we do about that. Um, but I wanna, I wanna talk about the uh the clubs as well, um. You know, those extracurriculars are important for the health of our kids, I think the the mental health of our kids. Um, why it, just based on the stuff that you've sent us, it looks like. The cost of the clubs are about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars based on the spreadsheet, and the income that we're bringing in from the forty-dollar fees. Are less than twenty thousand dollars, so we've got a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars shortfall.
You fund more than you collect.
Right, why if we're upping the pay-to-play, why are we not looking at upping? Um, upping the 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 clubs before we look at cutting?
Good, it could be one of your options, it's just that the the cost of clubs, the hard part about. Is that the higher the cost of a club, the fewer people will participate.
Right.
Now, my kids were on swim team and it cost me a thousand, I'm not suggesting this at all, please don't take that this is what I'm suggesting you do. But swim team for my kids costs about a thousand bucks. So people are used to seeing some kind of pay-to-play or sport, but a club, you know, you're not, it's a different thing. You know, you're paying for your child to go there and participate, but it there aren't the same, there isn't the same structure and the same kinds of things happening. So a parent might look at a club that's two hundred and twenty-two dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars and say, well, maybe not Model U N this year. Because they're not used to seeing a two hundred and fifty-dollar price tag for a Model U N club. Some parents are used to seeing a couple of hundreds of, you know, whatever dollar price tag for sports, however, I'm not recommending that at all. I'm just suggesting that the reason we didn't go to clubs is if you push clubs up to two fifty, you're going to collect them.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting we push it up to two fifty, right?
Like, and so you have to.
Definitely, there's definitely some clubs, and I and I get it, you know, being in athletics, you know, you've got regular games, there's competitions, you're traveling. So I I definitely get that that's more expensive, but there's also some clubs that are listed on the clubs that are competitive. You know, Deca is one of them, it's a compet- it's a co- there's a competition aspect to Deca. Um, so I I certainly think that should be closer, something like that to Onkar.
You can't.
With sports, but, you know, someone, I mean, Jaden probably speaks better to the one that's been in Deca. You know, I don't know a whole heck of a lot about Deca other than, you know, what's been told to us by by our student uh students.
I think part, if you don't want, I think part of it. The amount of, you could go on Deca's website right now, Deca dot, that'll work, it's very simple, Deca dot work. And you can see how many scholarships are offered through Deca, you can see how many work opportunities are offered straight out of college through Deca, you could see how many. High school opportunities are offered through 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 Deca. The benefit students have when they, when they, you know, I think the pay with, right, I think they have to pay right now is somewhere around eighty-five. Or maybe it was seventy-five when I was in school, something around there. And everything I get out of that, you know, I can't guarantee you that I that I do Deca. If it's two hundred and fifty dollars, that's just how I I didn't grow, you know, I didn't grow up, you know, paying for two hundred and fifty-dollar new cleats and. And five hundred-dollar new bats, that's just not, you know, and so to pay two hundred and fifty dollars for Deca, something like that, and I appreciate you asking this. I don't think I would have reaped the reward of the, you know, you know, say, the scholarships on their website or the leadership opportunities that then go on my resume and all these things. If that, if that makes sense a little bit, so it's a fair question, I just, you know, there's there's, there are some complications there that, you know, I don't, it it becomes inequity. I think question.
Deca's forty dollars.
Well, well, that's the national, that's the national, uh, there's a national.
Twenty dollars to Board of Ed and twenty dollars state national dues.
But there's a net, so there was a national one that I, and I wonder what it was.
Probably you're paying about forty fifty.
When I was in high school, that cost. That cost was, I think, eighty-five dollars. After COVID, I could not tell you what it is, I could not tell you what what that money relates to and all these things, I don't know. The 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 numbers went down as well, so, um, but I remember, I remember handing that over, you know, whether it's a check or a money, I'll be frank, we did. Eighty-five dollars um for debt, and that's just, that's just, you know, that's how it went, so, um. Part of that was the national, that's why I think I, I think I asked the question, I wrote it down somewhere. Of what the, how much of that money is going to National Deca, you know, to be a a a chapter of Deca or. On society, whatever, you know, whatever it is, and how much of the is going toward, you know, paying for whether, you know, the stipend or, you know, whatever it is of. Of 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 that club, so.
Yeah, I don't think any of our clubs, based on this spreadsheet, are even paying for the stipends that we pay.
No, like, uh, you may notice that different clubs have different fees that the parents incur already. You pay a fee to have the club exist, because you have to have an advisor. That the club runs a field trip somewhere, usually that that is conveyed to the parent. Yeah, that's, so you pay for it, unless unless there's a child that, you know, needs special help, I try to help, you know, the situation, but.
Sure.
Typically, um.
And that's should to be respected, yeah, so when our Deca students travel, that's totally on them.
On them.
When they go out to California or Florida, wherever.
The only one that wouldn't pay that scenario is the is the is the is the advisor that that accounts, that has to come out of.
Sure, our operating.
Right.
Yeah, I I I guess my initial thought with with clubs, obviously, I don't want to do anything, but. We should be raising a little bit to at least cover the stipends, and we're not even doing that in any of the clubs. That, as I look at the spreadsheet, and that's not a significant increase in cost, because the stipends are only like twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars. That I saw on the spreadsheet. So.
You're trying, not everybody pays.
Well.
So you're trying, you're trying, then, you know.
So that the next question I have is about stipends. Are are the stipends that we pay to all our athletic coach or even these club advisors, are they contract negotiated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, article, I think it included it in something there. Article thirty-eight.
And any, is it any teacher, I I guess, I'll I'll go to sports, because this, that's what I know. So you've got your your head coach that's paid or all the assistant coaches paid if they're teachers?
Uh, well, typically you do pay assistant coaches too, unless it's a volunteer. You have some volunteers, but you're paying, you're paying, yes, you're paying your coaches and most of your assistants.
Okay, so for for middle school, do you know what the? The breakdown, I think it was thirty thousand dollars for middle school applied program, what's the breakdown in transportation compared to stipends added at thirty thousand dollars?
It's just you, you're getting back that that amount of dollars if the entire program was.
Right. But I would assume that if.
You have a lot more transport at the high school.
Sure.
School, so it's probably, that that would be probably what you're saving, the total savings for a middle school.
Right, well, and and you know, as I was watching baseball trials today for the middle school. Um, and talking with other parents, knowing we had this upcoming, I I was wondering. You know, would we be able to? Do a middle school program with volunteer coaches that get the certifications that are required by the state? To coach public school sports?
You can try, but there's not, uh, I mean, you can try, um, I don't know that we would have a volunteer corps, you know, willing to go through all of that.
I can tell you, Jake, and I got baseball covered, and probably basketball.
You know, show up every day, yeah.
Um, but if we're doing it for free, we can, if we're volunteers.
Yeah, I mean.
Yes.
You can try, you know, if people approached me and, and, you know, we had some people willing to work with you guys, we would try to put something together. But but what would be predictable and consistent would not exist, right? And that's the thing, is people's lives change, people will, you know, will try to do it, and they can't do it, you know, that's why, that's why all the schools have these programs.
Right, I'm assuming that thirty thousand dollars for for middle school is mostly the stipends that we pay the coaches.
Yeah.
I'm I'm assuming that's it, I'm assuming, the 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 transportation doesn't eat a whole lot into that thirty thousand with what we're already paying.
Break it down, but you're not getting a ton out of it, but also, if you eliminate middle school athletics, the feeling is at least you have. And at least you have town athletics programs, right? I I'm not suggesting this or advocating for it, I'm explaining.
You're just giving us.
Why that, you know, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, I. There's a lot of work to do.
Jen.
A lot of my questions have been answered, um, but I would, I have more of a statement that I think that need to be cognizant of. So everything that we take away has a snowball effect, right? So and I appreciate that we're all kind of spitballing different things and trying to think of different ways to. If, I don't know, I'm not here to pay Paul, but when when we start eliminating programs. We in in educators, then we're eliminating people in front of our students, which limits the opportunity to educate. we, and educators, then we're eliminating people in front of our students, which limits the opportunity to educate students. And opens up the opportunity for potential tier one, tier two, tier three, tier four, our special education programs, which end up costing us and costing us more. When we talk about, um, when we talk about the buses, for instance, and, and changing the routes and then changing an entire school schedule, even just wondering at the middle school, talking about losing one class or one language, like having a foreign language be there as a core class. That would fix a lot of the problems with the scheduling, but then that takes hours and hours and hours of administrators' times to reschedule and redo what that schedule looks like for the sixth, seventh day or whatever. I just think that we need to be cognizant of what snowball effects that we're creating. So there's, I'm concerned about the lot of, a lot of the pre-investment on here, because now we pre-invest, so it persists zero. And then next year, we have our budget and then it looks like we're, I think you said like a hundred and fifty percent. So, which is kind of, not kind of, which is one of the main reasons why we're here where we are now, because of many pre-investments. A lot of it started COVID, a lot of it started eleven years ago with the, the less, less than inflation average. We just need to be cognizant about any decision or any elimination or reduction. Maybe we're saving money at this juncture, but we're not saving money. We're only creating a bitter hole for ourselves to go. Bill said it, we've got a lot of work to do. I don't know what that looks like. Um, I will say sports. I was looking at the sports line and, um, you know, some of these sports aren't offered in town. There's track club, cross country, the tennis, those different things. The other soccer, then soccer stops at the high school, not unless, unless your parents can travel, this is right. Uh, but then the ramifications of losing middle school sports is then you lose the opportunity of having that competitiveness in the high school sports, because now you have those folks that are, they don't, they don't transition. So, like for instance, there's no, there's no town league that's gonna teach anybody to do the long jump or the discus or all those things, right? Um, and we had our. Torian, I think, is a champion tennis player, that's what they were saying tonight, so that's after the night. But, you know, um, and there is a club at, at the middle school that works at the high school and that. I don't know where he started, but my point is, is that was available. Um, I just think we need to be cognizant of that. It's a pretty ugly list. Pretty brutal. I think that conversations need to be had and discussions need to be made and I know where I stand is what Andy Powell calls. Guardians of, guardians. Guardians of education, right? Thank you. So guardians of education. So we need to be guardians of education and really submit a budget that's going to support our students and our staff. We heard Audrey talk about it. But I think it's, it's not just our job and the town council's job and Dr. Willett's job about social media and advertising and lawn signs and signs on the green. It's bring your friend to vote that day. Tell your neighbor, you're at a party, you tell the neighbor. You know, there was one day, I was, I was at an activity for town soccer club traps and I'm like, man, if I could just take this whole group, it was during the referendum or whatever election, I'm like, man, if I could just take this whole group down there, because how many people are blissfully not understanding what's going on and how it impacts their, their family on, no matter what level, your family just starting out or your family have retired and it's just, you're the only person there. So I just think there's a bigger impact and I think we really need to take a good look and just see how our decisions will impact us. But I don't have any questions, because.
Thank you.
No, you know, because when I came in late, I'll review the, the meeting. And then if I have questions, they'll come up another time, but I'm not gonna waste people's time. No, things, things have already been said, so I'll have a look at that.
Dan.
Thanks, Tony. Um, yeah, it's unfortunate to see this list, obviously. Um, some of the just really quick questions and I'm not, I'm just narrowing my list of questions down from what I've heard across the room already. Um, but there was a line item uh, as far as custodial cuts. Um, again, not a level of importance of things I'm talking about, but during FFC, we already discussed being above budget by over two hundred percent this year. Uh, is that just gonna like keep like making that even further, Dr. Willet, or what's the impact there? What's the thought process around that one line item? We just, we talked about it two weeks ago, so it's top of mind right now.
You, you mean, uh, custodial being over, over, over budget because of the subs, sub custodians, is everybody sick kind of thing?
Yeah, exactly. But if we cut one, are we gonna need even more subs?
Um, well, I guess the thinking is, you know, it, it's not great now when we're using these subs to cover and we continue to use the subs to cover. Um, I think you're ju- you know, we're just looking at a terrible, uh, budget situation this year and the objective is to try to spread it out a bit, so you're not losing teachers, so. Again, it's a calculated risk, right? We would have more headaches, we would use subs. It would be difficult to manage, but we still have more classroom teachers, you know.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I knew my process. Yeah, thanks. Uh, I think just pre-buying anything, whatever we can from the current surplus that we have makes a hu- heck of a lot of sense to me. Uh, I know we talk a lot about the last ten years and last tw- or ten, twelve years, one point six, one point seven. Uh, love the fact that this board is, you know, we far exceeded that number last year and we're currently trying to do it again this year. Uh, we're seeing the effects of doing the increase that we did last year, this year for sure. We froze the budget, uh, the Board of Education when I first joined, uh, FFC as well as the Board in November, I wanna say. Right now, our budget ha- still isn't frozen as we're heading into April. I know the years are very different, obviously, but I think things are trending positively, unless I'm looking at all of those numbers wrong. So we're, it's heading in the right direction, but these cuts are crazy. Um, none of us wanna see it. But it'd be awesome to potentially start looking at just the su- in my opinion, I would love to hear the superintendent's thoughts or Dr. Willet, your thoughts on, you know, obviously, what is the best route forward that's gonna be the least impact to everyone? Um, I'm always open. I, I know this is a long list, but whatever we can add back. And then the only other item is just, um, SRO is one thing. That was a big ask from, or a big sticking point with the, our partners at the town council level. That's an easy area, I would say, that we should get some funding there from the town council for what they're asking us for. Um, let's use whatever fund balance or whatever it is to kind of open the checkbook and take one line item off of this decrease list, but I know that's a drop in the bucket compared to what we're having to do here, but any solve is worth taking a look at here from what we can get from that, that end. But, uh, all, all of my other questions were answered honestly, so I do appreciate it, everyone here. That's it, Tony. Thanks.
Uh, okay, so I wanted to wait until everyone went around for two reasons. So the first one was is that I was taking notes as everybody talked and Dana kind of touched upon this and I think we're realizing, I'm gonna jump around a little bit, guys, I'm not as organized as I could be with this, because I'm trying to put things in buckets, but everything's everywhere, which is kind of also a game of points where it trickles through everything, but. So first thing I just wanna know is that there were, I believe, if I'm counting correctly, thirty two line items of reductions that were already encompassed in our adopted budget. So these are, everything we're talking tonight is in addition to thirty two reductions. Um, something screaming at me is that, you know, I think I, I think we all believe a lot in education for a lot of ways, but I think that a lot of people probably generalize and, um, this is, aren't we trying to increase? Aren't we trying to give students the opportunity to go to college or into the workforce? Like, isn't that our ultimate goal? We want to get them all the way through our system. We want to graduate them. We want them to go on to further education or to the workforce, and we want them to be able to have the skills to do that. There's a lot of things on here that we're even thinking about or any moves we could make to adjust them is going to decrease our students' opportunities for college. It's gonna decrease their competitiveness. Um, you take away clubs, you're taking away so many extracurriculars these kids do. You have kids pay higher amounts for clubs, you're again diminishing the opportunities for a lot of kids to be able to put those on their college applications. Forget about everything that they may take from these clubs. Some are just for fun, some are skill related. Um, I know we're not getting super specific into some of the staff cuts, but take away some of these positions we're looking at in the high school. Again, these are things that people are, that students need to enhance themselves, to be able to apply for colleges, to make themselves competitive against other students in other districts who aren't doing this. Um, so, you know, DECA. Uh, Audrey mentioned it. She talked about a bunch of DECA things, right? We talk about DECA all the time. The thought about that club going away. Af- opportunities for kids, opportunities for them to get into schools, opportunities for them to get scholarships through schools. Not everybody can pay for their own education. I couldn't, I did it all on them, and I just finished paying it off. To Bill's point, you know, I also think another thing with clubs is like, my son is in DECA. They're going to DECA right now because he's playing baseball. If DECA was two hundred and fifty dollars, he wouldn't still be enrolled in DECA, so he could go before baseball and after baseball, so then I still paid whatever I spent to play for baseball. A lot of these kids do multiple things. And they can do that and some of us can afford to allow our students to do multiple things because of the prices. So again, you're going to, you're going to limit the kids that can do these things, um, and then limit opportunities. Domastics that we just recognized tonight, they're already paying, I think, like two thousand dollars each. I think we have hockey, that's kind of in the same boat. Um, parents are already paying a lot for these things. Um, something else that was mentioned, you know, Dan just brought up, that was the answer of, yeah, we'd have more subs, but we're, we want to save heads, of course we do. But then we also have to think about the fact that, look at when we talked about four pair vacancies and we had a pair come on and explain to us how that's not good for kids, because these subs are not trained to be pairs. And now we're taking away opportunities to bring in actual pairs. And those are the kids that are, those are the people that are with our most needy children. And the less experienced people we have, the more children will flip. The more intervention we don't have, the more children will go into special ed, all of these things are not what's right for kids. Um, and they're, they're going to cost more in the long run to gain a point. Um, there's a hole in almost everything we're coming up with and we're coming up with them because we don't wanna lose these things. You know, we talk about the buses, you know, when we think about everything that would encompass putting two schools on the same schedule, is that what's best for kids? If it is, then that's why we do it. We don't change the dynamic of the way that we run our school system because of things like this. I'll get to more why I don't think that's necessary in a minute, but it's not, we're not making decisions on what's best for kids. You know, we, we're gonna decrease two buses, okay, I see the reasoning in that too. We were here the last board and the board before, I think, and kids were on buses for a long time and they were in the cold on those buses for a long time. And when buses break down, another bus has to go and get them, and they're in the cold or in the heat for a long time. Um, there's just so much, we, the reason why we did what we did was to try to take some of those things away because it wasn't good for kids and it wasn't good for families, and now we're gonna go back to that. Again, I understand why we feel like we're being forced to, but it's not what's best for kids, so it's not an easy thing to do. We have to also be careful about talking about buses and talking about maybe we don't agree with pieces in the contract. This is the only bus company that came out to bid for us. It's all we've got. And the data at the time, and I was, the board was invited to be in the transportation meeting, and I was the only board member who did that to sit there and listen to the fact of the national concern with buses, because they're in the same positions everybody else did, and they're not taking small fish that easily. So we've got this one bus company. Okay, need to make some of these things work. That concerns me. MTSS. Yes, we got to see the younger kids doing it. Yeah, it was, it was great. It was so important. But I think, and I don't wanna screw this up, but I think what we heard in the round with the administrators was part of why we wanted to enhance MTSS is we don't have enough of it, or I think any of it in high school. The older kids need it too. We need more support there. We just added another case manager this year because we're exceeding the amount of hours our current case managers can handle. Because that's how many kids we have in special education. Kids in the high school, and again, I learned this at the administrative rounds, they were being moved from a social or a case manager that they had had to another one to adjust for schedules. That's daunting for a student and a family who has special needs. Trust me. I, I, I get the anger and the frustration, but I think, I think we're also displacing some of it. I think Tony can attest with me that we talked to Dr. Willett about this constantly. He's the last person that wants to do this. And he's scrubbing, and he's scrubbing, and he's scrubbing, and Tony and I are asking him to scrub and to scrub and to scrub. So as we already mentioned, some of us went to the, I don't know, of course, everybody who attended, some of us were there. For example, we went to the, um, town council meeting on Monday night when the Board of Ed budget was presented. And there was a discussion that some people have slightly mentioned about how the process works from the town's proposed, our adopted budget to the town's proposed budget. And what we basically heard was that the, the superintendent's proposed budget that he spends once working, we again know how long that took him before that came out. The hours we spend in this room, all the blood, sweat and tears, all our upset, all our frustration, all of our questions. Um, the Q and A that Dr. Willett spends hours and hours and hours with those long answers to. All the work that we do, the word that was used, irrelevant. Irrelevant. It's not about anything that we talk about. It's not about anything in our budget books. It's about a number. And that number is specifically about raising taxes. Every, almost every counselor but one, both parties agreed that this process doesn't work. Not working. They said various things, people can correct me, but they said that it doesn't work. They said it should change. They said it wasn't good for the community, et cetera, et cetera. Every town counselor did. We're wasting our time. Um, the town couns- the town manager stated that each failed referendum last year led to reducing the BOE budget. That's a fact. What is in effect is the insinuation that that was a necessity. There's nothing in this referendum process that shows what department the community is voting for to get more, to get less, nothing. There's no way for them to express opinion in that referent- referendum process. It is based on a number that they, people do or don't want their taxes raised to. That is the only thing in there. So choosing our department every single time with the most significant, I wanna say only cuts, but I think there was a tiny little something in the beginning, was a choice. It was a choice. And it was against everything I saw, almo- almost everything I saw that was in correspondence to us, to the town council, public participation. Everyone said dropping.
Uh, motion to go past ten and five second. Discussion. Jayden, sorry. Me.
I'm listening.
Brian. Bill, hi. Hi, Jen.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Okay, so, um, so yeah, they decided to keep cutting us. And even though the Tom Andrew stated publicly at one point that he could find reductions elsewhere, and they, they just cut us at the end. Um, so, you know, I, and like I said, I think all of it, everything I saw was overwhelmingly in support for the BOE, not to lose more money every single time. That's the only feedback. That's the only. That's the only feedback. That's the only feedback that's given. Is the emails that come in to us in the town council and the public participation that comes to us in the town council. There's nothing in my credo. So. You know, and again, this idea that the community doesn't want to support our schools. I, I don't often talk about votes. I know we have a town counselor who does. So I'll just say this. I know for certain that there isn't a person that voted for me in my first term or my second term that thinks I'm okay with this. That thinks I'm going to advocate for any of this. That one person. Guarantee it. Call me if you voted for me and you thought I was going to make massive cuts to the education system. So. Getting to my larger point. The. We've got to find a better way to do this. This isn't working. It's Groundhog Day. Some of them have been doing this for two years. Some of them have been doing this for a lot longer. And I bet you that we're all sick of this process and we're tired of feeling our time is wasted and we're tired of letting the students in the district down. And we feel like there's nothing that we can do about it except what limb are we cutting off next? What limb? And will it come back next year? Is everybody noticing it doesn't come back? The kids are noticing it doesn't come back. Sixth graders and seventh graders and eighth graders were telling us it didn't come back. I always leave rounds with a full heart. I left TMS rounds with heartbroken. And you know what I, why I was heartbroken? Because those kids had hope. Those kids sat there and they asked us to enhance the things they're, they're not asking for. HTML coding, they already have some, they're asking. They're asking to advance themselves in middle school. And we had to look at them. And take notes and thank you when I know we're not adding a thing for them. We're taking more away. So. The reality is, is that there's. There's more funding that the town should be considering. We all know that. The, the board of that averages one point six over eleven years. The unassigned fund in the town is doubled in ten years. It's over the percentage, what? A good amount over the minimum amount of percentage that they're supposed to keep in that unassigned fund. There's other reserve funds, there's tax and destabilization fund, municipal stabilization fund. There's unassigned funds for certain departments apparently. Why? It's a tough year, it's a rebuild year. Okay. Why aren't we looking to offset? Other, why are other departments going into their unassigned funds? Why aren't we looking to take more from our unassigned fund? Or these other funds? Where's, as Brian mentioned, where's that eight hundred thousand going? Is it going to significantly? Try to help our district? Other towns help their districts. Or any department that's failing. Failing is a funny word. I'll get fall down on social media for that one. Anyone that's looking at this amount of significant cuts year over year over year and taking away from the experience of children. You, you, some of these positions I'm looking at that we could cut in the high school. I can't even believe we would think of increasing those class sizes. My kids are in those class sizes. There's twenty eight kids in them. Standard co-teaching. And now we're going to increase that, that you're going to have more kids in special ed. No MTSS support to help them. So. What we need is. The process has been over, right? Just like superintendent proposes a budget to us, the town manager proposed a budget to the town council. That's where they are. They don't have to take that budget and they don't have to go down. I, I, I'm sorry I wasn't at the joint meeting. I had some personal reasons that I couldn't get out of, but I heard that it, there wasn't a lot of questions being asked. Um, I know that. Two counselors, Chris Moran and Jen Buckler, attended our rounds with the administrators and had the opportunity to talk to our administrators. They were there. The other counselors were not for whatever reasons. We don't have a lot of attendance at our meetings. Again, I think we see some of the same names on here. We need a real conversation with the people that are making these decisions. These are elected officials. We're all elected officials here. We were all put here by the community. We need a real conversation with these people. There are, there were four counselors that were cut, that kept reducing our budget last year. We need a real conversation. We need to talk to them about what these impacts are. We know what the impacts could be now. We're seeing the same thing year over year over year and it's only getting worse. What's next? I really want to believe that the, the two boards in this town can come together and, and talk about. Options and opportunities. This shouldn't be the end of the conversation. About it. We shouldn't just have to cut based on whatever conversation they're having, that they're saying does not include disinformation. So here's my second reason I waited to be at. I'd like to make a motion. To action the Board of Education Chair. To reach out to the town council to request a special meeting to discuss options and opportunities. To support the Board of Education adopted budget request. And to discuss the effects of a budgetary reduction. On the town public schools district. Prior to the town council budget approval.
Do I have a second? Discussion.
Can you read that again, Jen?
To action the Board of Education Chair. To reach out to the town council. To request a special meeting to discuss options and opportunities. To support the BOE adopted budget request. And to discuss the effects. Of a budgetary reduction. On the town public school district. Prior to town council budget approval. Basically, before you make any more decisions, can you talk to us about what we're going to lose and can we at least look at it? Can you at least look at the items and see if there's anything that you're willing to help us out with here? Before we go further.
Lisa, did you get that? Discussion.
You didn't get a second?
Yeah, you gotta do it. Okay. Jayden.
I ended, I was just curious. Don't they have access to this list? I mean, surely they do. Well, well, after this meeting they will because it's in the meeting, right? It's public.
You have a tool for the purpose of discussion. You made no determinations and you, you've actually not instructed me, you know, there's nothing, you're publishing, you're having a conversation based on information. I mean, certainly I can help in any way you want, but I think you are, you have decided not to make any determinations. So, you know, everything is subject to change based on deliberations.
And while we're in discussion, I think. It, it personally, why, why I'm going to support the motion, I, I, I don't think. This has not been enough, you know, the, the, the content that's been provided to the council has not been enough so far, you know. Everything that's happened, I think everything that Jen just mentioned, I will speak for Jen. From my perspective, why I'm going to support this. It has not been enough so far. And so whatever we can do to again, get, get. Get in front of them and have a conversation with them, um, I completely support. Let's, let's do it.
You know what I'm saying? I'm gonna go back to it a bit. I'm gonna need you to come to every meeting, so point it you, Joe. But we, we go back to that, that initial one, you know, how do we get the word out? How do we get people to understand what their dollars are doing? What we've been doing the past couple of years is a reaching. We've got to do something different. If that's asking for a special meeting, if that's giving the council the opportunity to understand more that they don't know that, you know what I mean? I agree. Right?
Oh, we know, uh, uh, how so? The motions about these potential cuts, they're going to be made.
The motion is for. For me to approach the town council about having a meeting. To discuss. Opportunities to fund, uh, the Board of Education's request and the effects of reductions to them.
Well, that's all I, my mind saw before I. Even finished that what I was saying. Was that, is this, is this list, this potential list is what? Of reductions as you're speaking of in this motion to discuss the potential reductions are going to be. Presented to the town council? Or what? Do, do you want them to know that we might lose all of these lists of whatever it come out to be, forty, fifty items? Teachers. Uh, pathways, all middle school sports. I mean, the list goes all, every club in town. Is this, I mean, I, I think unless they see this list. It's just more jabber that they won't ask any questions that I, at the, at the, at another meeting.
So my answer is yes, I want to talk about all of this. We're going to have to talk about it the same way that we do here. There's. Obviously larger reasons we're not putting it public to, right? These are people's jobs. You know, and nothing is permanent yet, so.
No, I understand.
I, I think part of what Dr. Willet's doing is maybe not instilling fear before we get to a certain place, right? Too. So. I think we would have to discuss it in this way. We'd have to let it be something that they could be with us. And to be quite honest with you, Brian, I'll discuss whatever they want to discuss as long as they have a discussion with us. And to Renee's point. There, we can give them all the materials. We've given them lots of materials. They're not looking at it. They, they told us. They told us that they're not. So I, I would agree to you. I'd love for them to look at it and come to their own decision, but they're not.
You can.
And to Jayden's point. To Jayden's point, I just want to respectfully disagree with your words. It's not that we're not giving them enough information. It's that they're saying that they're not using that info, they're not utilizing that information, or at least some of them are not. And therefore, they all said that this process is not working. And almost everyone there, I can name the exact counselors if we want, but they were on both sides.
The other thing I, I have to like counterpoint or whatever, but I, I, I do want to state though, even though I, I was. Had a passion for this. Statement about the buses, a bus company and whatnot. I'm not talking bad about the bus company whatsoever. I'm trying to find funding. So we don't lose these things. That's my only thing. That, that's.
And to answer that, I don't, I don't think that that's your intention, but I also know that sometimes. People take from our meetings different things than we intend them to. So that's why I was just saying that like when we talk about things. About maybe being sounding unfair or dollar amounts, whatnot that are in contracts. We just have to be careful about that because. Again, they're our only bus company right now and we can't run a school system without a bus company. That's all.
But the motion on the table.
Well, I just wanted to clarify a point. I didn't want it to come across that I was saying something that was portrayed that that I was being negative against the bus company. And that's not. So.
So you only are going to go and speak with them? Is that what the moment, or the whole board is supposed to attend this?
I would like to have a couple of meetings. Especially another.
Yeah, the, the direction as I understand. For me to approach the council. To organize the meeting. Because it, discussion.
Okay. Hearing none. You okay, Jen?
Yeah.
All right.
Coming off food poisoning, I'm. Dr. Will, a head, little, little goldfish.
Dr. Willet's got candy over here.
So, Jayden.
Hi.
Renee.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Hi Jen.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
All right, motion pass. Okay. So being cognizant of the time, understanding that we have still one more action to do. I'll look around the room for any go backs on the current. Agenda.
I would just like to say one thing, not a go back. I just, I'm appreciative of the conversations. I, I know, I know it's been a little. Or I think everybody's. Either had questions or statements, but are bringing something to the table that's a conversation. And I think that that's something that's going to help us. Progress. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, good.
You know, I think having these conversations, whether someone's idea is shot down for a reason or taken. If we don't talk about it, then it's. It's like the question that is. So let's keep asking that question. Let's keep working for our goals, my.
Well, that's fine. All right. Dr. Willet. For action, educational reserve fund.
Okay. So you, you have access to this, um, your own, um, system government. Okay. So educational reserve fund, as you know, um, each year, Board of Education after the third quarter. Of the fiscal year, when the audit is complete. And move funds into the educational reserve fund. In the past, under ordinance, um, eighty six, chapter eight. There, there was a process involved in the council. Now the board can, uh. Make a motion to have those funds moved into the ERF independently. So, um, you know, it still has to happen after the third quarter of the fiscal year because the audit has to confirm that those funds are actually available and. That they are what we thought they were. So at this point, um, the ERF balances of March thirteenth, I'm sorry, March seventeenth. Was one hundred forty three thousand, three eighty four sixty. ERF transfer approved by the Board of Education in this meeting, uh, of seventy six, two forty seven, seventy seven. Would create a total of two nineteen, six thirty two, thirty seven. Keep in mind that. The budget process right now currently has the potential for allocating about a hundred to offset energy costs and. Actually, this was written before some of this stuff here too. So there might another hundred might go to, um. The tech if you're, you know, offsetting the tech initiative. So this says one nineteen, six thirty two, but as I'm, we're doing everything we're doing, if you took another hundred, you'd have nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty two. If you only took the one hundred for, um, energy, it would be one nineteen, six thirty two. If you take one hundred for energy, one hundred for offset of IT. Uh, and a one to one initiative, you'd have nineteen, six thirty two. This was done before then. Let's put it in here. So that's your status. Um, you can have a general statute that now gives you the independent ability is ten to twelve, two forty eight A. Uh, the provision is there. And what you'd need to do tonight is, uh, make a motion to, uh. Put that money into the ERF.
Dan, as a FFC chair, do you have any comments, Dan?
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely support doing this, um, just because of the update in the statute here. We were potentially able to, you know, do this. Um, just based on FFC, um, I would say, uh, but we wanted to talk about it here. So I think it makes sense. So. Nothing further.
Hey, Dan, any, uh, discussion? All right, I will entertain, uh, the motion.
Solid Board of Education pursuant to G, oh God, CGS ten dash two four eight A hereby authorizing the deposit of audited balance. Of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, seventy six thousand, two hundred forty seven, seventy seven cents into the Board of Educational. Board of Education Educational Reserve Fund.
Discussion. Hearing none. Jayden, hi. Renee.
Hi.
Brian, bye. Bill, bye. Hi Jen.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
All right, Dr. Willet, make the deposit. All right. Public participation, not a two minute limit, comments, limited items on this agenda. As always, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized. Give your name and address for the minutes. Going twice? All right. Dr. Willet, we were closed, but this patient, points of information, uh, would anybody from the board like to speak?
Like to thank everybody for listening to the motion and just like to point out that that was a unanimous vote.
Anybody else? Dr. Willet, tell us about our future.
I would highly recommend going on the last construction rounds of the year, uh, May first. And signing up early is always great because we get to know how many are coming and, you know, make accommodations for that. Um, it probably will not be nine to three the whole day, but it'll, it'll be, you know, a good chunk of time as it usually is. Um, in co-teaching, you'll have a really good opportunity to get to dive deep on that, which I think you'll really enjoy. Um, all of the stuff that you've seen, I think you, you've, you've really enjoyed that. I guarantee you, you'll love this. It'll give you a really good sense of what we do. Um, and again, the heavy lift is done by the admin, the teachers, you know, the other staff, some thanks to them. But, uh, I think really think you'd find this extremely informative. It's going to be across district. We'll be traveling around. Co-teaching is across district, so there's no one school. That's why it's a district one. You'll see. Uh, you'll see different environments.
All right. Everybody, thank you. I know it's a late one. I appreciate each and every one of you for what you do. Have a great day. Motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Second, sir.
Discussion. Jayden.
Hi.
Renee.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Hi Jen.
Hi.
Dana. Dan.
Hi. Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
You.
And the door locked. Did you lock me up?
I did not, no.